Are we all ready? Okay. Welcome, I am going to reconvene our regular Board of Education meeting for Washington Unified School District, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are going to begin with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as a traditional home of the Potwin people. These sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Potwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Potwin tribal neighbors for their contributions as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. And now we have our pledge of allegiance. Can our Elkhorn Wildcats, can you please lead us in the pledge? Oh, Tigers, sorry, I had a moment. Sorry, I had a Westfield moment. I know exactly who you are.
I got you.
Thank you, please. I know, alright.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh my goodness, Tigers, I will never live that down. I apologize. Alright, and that takes us to our roll call. We have Trustee Wong.
Here.
Clerk Castro.
Present.
Vice President Coffey.
Present.
Trustee Hunt.
Here.
And I too am present. Our announcements of items in closed session. Alright, bear with me. Government code five four nine five six point eight, property seven five oh, River Point Drive, and that is two one oh one Stone Boulevard. Negotiating parties, Washington Unified School District and CBRE. Under negotiation, instructions to negotiators regarding the lease options to house the district office staff on a temporary basis. Information received. Item two, government code five four nine five six point eight, property four two five Todd Hunter Avenue. Negotiating parties, Washington Unified School District and the city of West Sacramento Parks and Recreation. Under negotiation, instructions to negotiators regarding the lease use of Bright Park. Information received and direction was given. Government code five four nine five six point nine D two, pending your potential litigation. Information was received and direction was given. Four, government code five four nine five seven, education code four four nine two nine point two one, and education code four four nine five one, adoption resolution number two four two five dash three nine to release and or reassign administrators and non-relection probationary certificated employees. The roll call vote was five by unanimous vote to adopt resolution two four two five dash three nine, employees effective June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. For items number five and six, we will go back into closed session. Okay, are there any changes to the board agenda?
Yes, I would like to make a change.
Okay.
In regards to the consent agenda of three A, approval of the ratification of contracts under thirty-five thousand, I would like to move that to action items.
Okay, so we'll move three A in consent to action item three. Any other changes? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
I move.
Alright, moved by President Coffey.
I second.
Seceded by Clerk Castro, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Okay, and that now takes us down to association reports, and we have our student board member, Anthony Juarez Martinez from Yolo High School, welcome.
Hello. Just to give you heads up, there's gonna be a lot of Read Across America. Please don't get mad at me if I repeat it again and again. Alright, we're gonna start with Bridgeway. Successful engaged the community for Read Across America Day. Creze competition members represented the school with pride. Eighth grade completed a Socrate seminar to deepen understanding for Frederick Douglass. Riverbank. Launching family literacy night on March eleventh and the eighteenth to actively involve parents in providing students reading skills through hands-on activities and reading stations. Elkhorn Village, delivering a successful Read Across America celebration with mystery reader videos. Middle school rally engaged students and boosted school spirit. Activity. Facilities, I'm sorry about that. Updates were shared. With families during coffee with the principal. Southport. Full embrace Read Across America Week with police and mascot singer reading to the students. Outdoor reading events, door decorating. Contest. Stonegate. Conducted a meaningful walk with Ruby event reinforcing, reinforcing civil rights education. Students participated in Read Across America's celebration. Westsmokes. Recognizing and. He home here. Appreciated all guest readers for their valuable consideration during Read Across America Day. Westfield. Acknowledging key community partners including Board Trustee Jackie Wong and West Sacramento Fire Department for readings, reading to students. STEAM teacher Elizabeth Burkeholder awarded a national grant placing the school as a leader in STEAM education. Washington Unified. Virtual Academy. Preparing for the eighth in-person learning days focusing on math assignments and team building activities. Promoting students engagement through field trips. Middle school classes are at full. Full showing, strong enrollment. Washington Adult School. Six ELL students enrolled in college credits courses, advancing dual education goals. Community agreements promoted through participation on safer streets and civil responsibility. Fifteen students earned their high school diploma. Yellow High. Driving students involvement through a high-energy attendance basketball tournament. Twenty-four players and sixteen cheer squad members showed strong school pride and teamwork. Everyone is excited and looking ahead to the final match next week. River City. Cons- concerns. Concerts. Counselors are managing courses, scheduling, and leading FASA, family support nights in surge. Students are ready for the future. Washington Middle College. Earned national recognition, consideration from NUSC placing in top eleven school in America. Students actively, actively participated in habits, restoration, photo trips, and culture college events. Staff participated in top-level PD at the California Teachers of English and the Middle College Concertum Conference. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony, as always, you're welcome to say, and we'd love your input on our items this evening. We're going into our English Language Development Program as well as some others, so, but you're also welcome to go.
Thank you for everything, and goodbye.
Have a good evening. Okay, that now takes us to our WSTA report, welcome, President Nepp.
My turn, huh? Alright, good evening Superintendent Hildreth, President Kirby Gonzalez, Vice President Coffey, trustees, cabinet. I wanted to take a minute to talk about another incident of violence that occurred this week at Westfield Village Elementary School. A teacher was injured and ended up in the emergency room. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we still have lots of work to do to make sure our teachers and students are safe. I think there's some things that we can do right off the bat. Not sure if I've mentioned it before, but I noticed when I went into one school that the discipline matrix was laminated and posted in every classroom, and I think that's something that we can do right now is make sure, make it a district policy that we have the discipline matrix up in every single classroom. We have the Williams Act up in every classroom by law, but we should make sure that all of our students understand process for dealing with disciplined violence in the classroom. And then in regards to that, I think we should do an annual audit to look at discipline instances and where the discipline matrix was followed, if it was followed, and if not, what steps were missed. Because if we know that we're being accountable and our students know that we're being accountable and our cabinet administration know that we're being accountable, at least we have measurable data, right? If this is not consistent, then we don't really know where the weak points are. I understand we're redoing the discipline matrix, we're working on the discipline matrix right now, which is fine, but I will tell you, after visiting lots of classrooms, especially with new teachers, a lot of teachers don't know the steps. Further, having had to have the conversation with folks about what, what it requires to assign a student to intervention or begin a behavior plan or recommend evaluation or recommend for a student study team, it takes twelve weeks of observation and data collection. And those, as far as behavior plans, if we're following the discipline matrix and it's being recorded, that's data that can be reported, recorded to help students, and we can be consistent with how we're delivering that, so. I don't know why, I haven't said this before, but let's just do it, let's just have our discipline matrix up, let's have these conversations all the time, not just when something happens, let's have these conversations and try on our end to make it better. I just want to restate again, WSTA at the current time, when we're looking at budget contingencies, is recommending that we do not approve any more out-of-state conferences. For the time being, we should put a memoriam on out-of-state, a moratorium on out-of-state conferences. We have a lot of really great people here, so if we can't find it in-state, some of my colleagues that I work with, some of the leaders in this district, we can read a book and provide the training in-house because we, we can save money and we have specifically hired and have employees to do development, professional development, so it's a way to save a little bit of money. I want to talk a little bit about the budget and interest-based bargaining. First of all, bargaining continues to go well, I'm hearing good reports, I'm glad to hear it. One thing that has come up in the last couple of weeks is the recognition that when this body and the cabinet decided to set sixteen million dollars aside earlier this year to put in restricted funds to hopefully account for budget shortfalls and keep us on track moving forward. It was kind of eye-opening for us because last year negotiations, we were told there was no money, and then this, this money kind of magically appeared. I know that CSCA's talked about it, we've talked about it. And we've heard from, from some that we didn't know it was there, we found it at the beginning of the year. Sixteen million dollars for a district our size is a lot of money. I don't know how it disappears, do we find it under the couch? Not sure, but that's a problem for us, and so as we're talking about having trust in interest-based bargaining, and we're going into another contract here, we're having a little bit of trouble on the, on the finance side with the trust because all of the papers we're looking at, all of the budget overviews that we're looking at, we're like, well, where's the money now? It wasn't, it wasn't there last year apparently, and then it showed up, where is it now? And can we really believe all the projections and what it looks like in four years if we can't believe? But these things matter, they matter to us. We, we are a grassroots organization and we don't have the resources and the full-time ability to look over these things, so when we go into the boardroom, we really have to believe we, we understand what we're seeing. So maybe we can have a deeper conversation and maybe there's more information we need to have, but that's a little bit alarming for us. Employee retention. After the last board meeting, we should all be seriously committed to making an effort to listen to our employees if we want to keep them here. I'm, I, I heard today even more rumblings about some potentially great teachers that might end up moving along. One thing that we can do, we can't, we can't fix it all at once, but one thing that I encourage and is that regardless of why someone is leaving, whether or not it's from a reduction in force, a non-relection, someone's resigning, someone's retiring, we need to make sure we're doing exit interviews for every employee leaving the district. Because we might know the why from our perspective, right? If someone was non-relected, we're gonna hear from their administrator, well, I'm not gonna hear, no one's gonna hear except for HR, what the reasons were for non-relection, okay? But I think we should hear from the person leaving. Did they get enough support? Did they have what they needed? Did they have enough training? Did they feel like they understood the campus culture? If we're going to retain and recruit, we have to know both sides of that experience, and I understand, especially with non-relects, there's certain things that can't be disclosed, but I don't, I don't need to know that information. But I think it would be helpful for HR and this body to have that information so that we can retain our best. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you Tigers.
I should, I will never live that down, that's how you know I'm tired. Okay, CSCA report, welcome, President Gendara.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Superintendent Hildreth, Board of Trustees. The first thing I'm gonna talk about tonight is something President Nepp brought up last board meeting, and he just did again this evening. Out-of-state travel. I know I brought this up when we had one of those budget study sessions at Washington Middle College, and I know the previous Board of Trustees towards the end, there was a stop or a pause on out-of-state travel. And I made the comment at Washington Middle College that, you know, we found two million dollars, and you would have thought we found two hundred million, because we're going from Washington to West Virginia to Miami to Louisiana to Colorado to Philadelphia and everywhere all over this country. I mean, the only thing we haven't approved is, you know, out the country, and I'm, I'm actively looking. So, like WSTA President said, and I know I mentioned it, you know, we do have our own classified PD budget, but I'm not against in-state or as far as, you know, Reno, Vegas, that area, because again, just because it's in Vegas or Reno doesn't mean it's cheap or more expensive. But I, I want to also say that, that we, we would support eliminating or, you know, putting a pause on out-of-state travel, especially, again, we're in negotiations and money's being discussed. The second thing, I'm, I'm piggybacking off of Doug a lot. Last board meeting, there was a teacher, Mr. Colligan up here, who was leaving, and then Mr. Nepp, you know, talked about what we need to do to retain our, their teachers, and I'm gonna speak on our par educator. Since June of twenty-four, so right before the beginning of this school year, we've had twenty-three up till now, our last board meeting, we've had twenty-three par educators leave. I'll give it, I'll take two of them that were their fault. The other two, again, and like Mr. Nepp just spoke about, I've been saying this for years, where's our exit interviews? Why are they leaving? And we also have to protect them, like the staff, the teachers, and the par educators just from being assaulted. I know a handful of them that left because they didn't sign up to get assaulted in the classroom, hit, and no repercussions to the students. And I know we're here for the students, but we also have to protect our staff. They shouldn't be subject to getting assaulted and hit and beat. And then just to go off negotiations, again, I know you guys have probably got your update. I first want to thank, if anybody knows me, they know I'm a stickler for time, so I do want to thank Assistant Superintendent Borges and her team. They have been, they have been responsive and on time, and it's been really good negotiating with them. I also want to thank CBO Stovall, because at the last session, we went over the budget study slides for a good, I don't know, forty-five minutes, an hour, so I want to thank her for going over those. And I know you guys are probably being updated, I'm sure of it, of our proposal, but we feel that what we presented to the district is fair from what we were presented with the budget. It's fair, there's money, and it's a fair proposal. And we also put language in there that, again, that it will hope to retain our par educators and our bus drivers, because we need to, those are the most overturn, overturn positions. So with that, I want to thank you guys, you guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you so much. That now takes us to our general public comments, which we have one this evening, okay? I'm going to read our disclaimer, and if anybody else would like to fill one out while I do this, you're welcome to, right over here. At our regular board meeting held on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the board resolved that written public comments received by three PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during the meeting. We did receive three of those today. Members of the public may address the board on topics of the board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know, the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to twenty minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that the comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in public board meetings, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, and our public comment this evening?
We have one public comment request from Ruth Pagano Turn.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening, I'm Ruth Pagano Turn. I'm a parent.
I'm a parent of a River City High sophomore and a Southport Duck sixth grader. We have a cultural divide, as you all know. There's so much happening right now that is quite frankly difficult to process. So I think it's important to focus on what is in our sphere of control and how not to be divided on everything. And by sphere of control, I'm referring to the areas in life in our work where we have direct influence and can actually make a difference through our own actions and choices and some things like safety and health, we should not be divided on. You all have genuine power to make changes in our children's lives. I am here to formally request the following changes and believe in your power to achieve these things. Number one, we need and want a school resource officer on the River City High School campus as soon as possible. When I say we, I'm including myself and the 445 other signed supporters of the petition I wrote last week. Although this may not seem like a super high number, I would like to remind you all it was in one week and everyone in the room and listening from home, that some of our local elections from last November were decided by less than 400 votes, one was decided by 50. The timeline for the development process of the SRO program needs to be adjusted. When it comes to health and safety, inefficiency is inexcusable. Last board meeting, there were comments at the end about bringing quote, "dogs" on campus. By that, I'm assuming we were referring to narcotic detention dogs. Has anyone stopped to think about that, what that really means? Does anyone know how those dogs work? We don't have lockers at River City, so that means backpack searches, classroom searches, vehicle searches, person searches. So let me get this straight. The board is okay with trained canines running through classrooms while students and staff are present, searching student belongings or their person, their body? But now we have to have a survey, listening sessions and focus groups to collect data for months just to present to you all about a decision you already committed to? Having a school officer present is something you already committed to. Number three, educating our youth on drug prevention and ways to stop vaping should happen before any dogs come on campus. Number four, all children who attend River City or any school campus in this district should be able to enter a bathroom without fear or be harmed. This is what we should be discussing. Number five, a classroom teacher who has already stood up here and said they are leaving, we know lots of paras have left too. What is the commonality? Why are they leaving? Let us get back to a place where learning is at the forefront and commit to proving to parents and guardians in this community that River City is not only a safe place, but is the place to send your children. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And are there any other public comments? Okay. All right, we do not have a public hearing this evening, so that takes us to N, our information discussion item, and that is our district wide English Language Development Program and Services Update. And that is with the Director of English Learners and Support Programs, welcome Stacy Tran.
Please go after a tall person. Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Trustees, Dr. Hildreth, Cabinet and Community. Tonight, I'm pleased to share the annual English Language Development Program and Services Update with you. As you can see, English Language Development relates to all of our areas of our strategic plan. It promotes equity for all students and it helps create students who can be productive members of society. Tonight in my presentation, I'll share some demographic data on who our English learners are in Washington Unified. I'll highlight some program successes, present some academic achievement data for our English learner students, highlight some of our former River City High School EL students and identify some next steps and future goals for our program. In Washington Unified, we're currently home to 1,221 as of today, English learner students, and that makes up 17% of our student population. This year, we had a change. Below, you'll see it says K through 12th grade. This year, the state of California decided not to designate TK students as having a language fluency. So they're N, undetermined for now, and then they'll take the initial LPAC for the first time in kindergarten. So we're interested to see how that will impact our English learner numbers moving forward. So many of the four kids in TK are not ready to take a standardized test on the computer with a stranger within the first 30 days of school. So I think it was a wise choice and you'll see a little bit more on that later. Of our English learners in Washington Unified, 29% are considered newcomers, meaning that they've been in United States schools for fewer than three years. So that's 355 students and we'll talk a little bit more about newcomers in a minute. Of our multilingual students, so when I say English learners, I mean those currently designated as English learners in need of passing the LPAC test. Our multilingual students, if you look at the blue box to the right, are our current English learners, but also our reclassified students who were in our program but then passed out of it and are initially fluent students, which are the ones who speak another language at home, were administered initial LPAC during their first 30 days in California schools and passed it the first time. So that can be an incoming kindergartner, that can be a seventh grader who comes to us from another state, it can be students who come to us from other countries who grew up in bilingual programs, so they, they come knowing quite a bit of English. So of those students, we have 2,814 and 29% of them were born outside of the United States. So as you can see, that number is growing every year. So that's 820 of our Washington Unified students who were born outside of the US. You may be wondering where these students are coming to us from. These are the birthplaces of our multilingual students who are born outside of the US. We're up to 48 countries of origin as opposed to last year, we had only 39. So the diversity in Washington Unified is becoming more and more rich each year. Of our students not born in the US, as you can tell Afghanistan is the biggest piece of that pie, 47% of our non-US born students were born in Afghanistan. And then together, Mexico and Central and South America make up the next biggest chunk and then Russia and Ukraine and then other students. So the other is where the additional countries come in. We have a couple this year from Africa. Our numbers from countries in Asia are increasing as well. The next slide, this is my favorite. If you can have a favorite pie chart, this is our Washington Unified Language Census data and this is information that we share with principals. We share this at our District English Learner Advisory Committee Meeting, D-LAC, and then site administrators also share it at their site English Learner Advisory Committee Meetings, just to talk about the makeup of their school, the composition of the English learners, but also to compare it to the school, the other schools in the district. So currently, if you look at the chart, 61% of our students are currently English only students, so they come from homes where only English is spoken. 17% are English learners, 17% are reclassified and 5% are initially fluent. So because 61% of our students come from English only speaking households, that means that when you combine the English learners and the reclassified students and the initially fluent students, that's 39%. So nearly 40% of our students in every single classroom throughout Washington Unified goes home from school and is surrounded by languages other than English. So whenever I do trainings for teachers or whenever I talk to parents or administrators, I make sure to emphasize the fact that because we only have 17% English learners, doesn't mean that we don't have students who are sitting in classrooms and translating as their teachers are speaking into their home language and then in order to articulate their answer, they're having to translate it back into English. So that's something really important to keep in mind. And then if you look at the chart to the right, those, that is our language fluency by school. So while as a district, we have 17% English learners, if you look at the boxed column in the middle, you can see the percentages by school. So while the average is 17%, Westfield has 42% of its students currently English learners. Riverbank has 38%. Some of our schools are a little bit smaller, but it's important to look at the unique populations of each school as well. And then including the reclassified and the initially fluent, the RFEP and the IFEP, how many multilingual learners are at our schools and how teachers need to maybe adapt their instruction and how our site administrators and our teachers need to provide sometimes materials in multiple languages when communicating with parents. And that's where our bilingual school liaisons come in very handy as they are everywhere, all the time, all at once. On the next slide, these are the different typographies of our English learner students, ranging from the left, from the least time in the United States to the right, the most time in our English learner program. So according to the CDC, the California Department, CDE, California Department of Education, the definitions of these typographies sometimes change and they're changing constantly. So it's always new information. Just this year, they changed the definition of an LTAL, Long Term English Learner, from six or more years in US schools to seven or more years. So that gives us a little bit more grace, realizing that language research shows that it takes about five to seven years to acquire a language. I always use the example, I've been learning Spanish for 35 years and I'm still not fully proficient yet. So giving our kids a little bit more time. But as you can see, starting on the left, 29% of our students are newcomers, of our English learner students are newcomers. We have a wide range of support classes at River City, Riverbank and Westmore Oaks has increased support to their newcomers as well and those focus a lot on foundational literacy skills. 60, 62% of our English learners are exactly where they should be. They've been in the country or in California schools between three and seven years and they're not yet a long term English learner. So that's 755 students. And I combined the services for the ELs and the LTALs because they get the same thing, although our teachers do provide differentiated instruction based on student needs. So I'll go to the LTALs, the long term English learners are those now, as of this year, who've been in our schools for seven or more years. And that percentage, 9%, is the lowest I've seen in about 10 years here in Washington Unified. I went back and pulled the data and it's always been hovering at 10% or more. So I'm proud to say that our teachers are doing an incredible job, help, supporting students, giving them the instruction that they need to get reclassified. It's a struggle though because we're getting all these newcomers who are going to take probably not five years to reclassify if they come from a country where English is not spoken and where they don't use the same alphabet as us. So it's constantly a moving, I'm not going to say target, but a moving dynamic of how we're providing services to our students. And for students, in addition, above and beyond newcomers, those students are getting daily designated ELD, whether it's 30 minutes in elementary or a period in middle school and high school. We're also providing professional learning and coaching to teachers. These are some examples of some of the sessions that we've presented this year. Our English Learner Program Specialist, Robin Wilgumuth, presented to our middle school English History and Science Teachers during last Friday's Professional Learning Day. We just got the feedback about two hours ago and it was really well received. Teachers were grateful for the strategies and some commented that they were even able to start planning in the session because it was a hosted planning session style where they could use the time to not only learn new strategies, but also plan with their colleagues to implement. So that was exciting to hear. And then we do progress monitoring assessments every year for all English learner students because LPAC is only given once a year. And by the time we come back to school and get the data in fall, it's already several months old. So just to have fresh data midway through the year and to also let teachers really know where their students' strengths lie and where their academic gaps are so that they can meet those needs and try to fill some of the gaps prior to the LPAC window opening in February. Also, this year is an exciting year because we're in the process of piloting for an English Language Arts program. So many of the publishers have reached out to me to, to ask to meet with me to demonstrate some of the ELD, the English Language Development Components of the programs. We have some of our teachers piloting the ELD programs that go along with the ELA, English Language Arts programs. And so that's really exciting to hear their feedback and, and really get our hands on the materials from kindergarten through the middle grades and all the way up to see kind of what offerings they have for our students and what program will meet the needs, not only for our English Language Arts curriculum, but for that designated ELD time. It's also interesting to look at the publisher, at the teacher's editions of the books and see what strategies they have for integrated ELD, which is all the strategies that teachers embed all day, every day. So how are they differentiating for the needs of the English learners, but also keeping the rigor high and giving those students grade level instruction? So now that I've talked so much about the English learners, you may be wondering, what does it take to graduate from the English Learner Program? So on the next slide, this is our Washington Unified Reclassification Criteria. The state of California sets three of these four components. So the state of California says they have to score an overall score of four on the annual LPAC exam and that stands for English Learner Proficiency Assessment for California. We have to get teacher input and we have to do a parent consult. So whether that's a phone call or a letter home saying, congratulations, your child is eligible for reclassification. If you have any questions or concerns, give us a call and we're happy to talk about it. In all my years, I've never had a parent saying, no, please don't reclassify my child. But they are reassured, both teachers and parents are reassured to know that even after reclassification, we're legally required to monitor them for four years. So I push out teacher surveys for all reclassified students. So if you're a middle schooler with eight teachers, some of our, our middle schools have eight periods, eight teachers provide feedback on how you're doing in terms of classroom participation, listening skills, writing skills, reading comprehension skills. And there's a spot to put whether they're, they're on track and meeting grade level expectations or they're not. And then we have a really cool platform elevation where I'm able to see if a teacher marks that the student is not making adequate progress, it shows up as a red flag to me so that I can read that document really thoroughly and email the teacher to say, how can we provide support to you to provide to this student? Also, it helps us recognize patterns. If all of the teachers are saying they need a little bit more support, we can't unreclassify a student. I've been asked that before too, but we can provide additional support. We can have them sit in on an ELD class even though they're not an English learner if those are the skills that they would benefit from. So the one criteria that we as a district control is criteria two, the one with the two, and you can meet that by either scoring, meeting or exceeding standard on your CASP, English Language Arts test or a district benchmark. And we have a lot of leeway with that. It can be I-Ready, it can be an assessment that's embedded in the English Language Arts program. It can also be as local as a classroom assessment that everyone does. And as long as that potentially reclassified student does as well or better than their English only counterparts, that counts. And then for our students who are duly identified, our English learners who have IEP plans, Individualized Education Plans, they have a little bit of a different criteria. This year, actually just last month, February of 2025, the reclassification criteria for our duly identified students was changed. Before, if the IEP team, which is the case manager, the teacher, the family, the administrator, oftentimes for English learners, they'll invite me to an IEP meeting. If the team agrees that the student was meeting their language goals, we could move forward with reclassification that way. And February of 2025, the state of California decided to make that a little bit more rigorous and we're no longer allowed to reclassify students based on the IEP process, which was a huge hit to our, our special ed department when they found out about it, but still we're going to continue to challenge ourselves and continue to meet the needs of our students. So on regular LPAC, they still need to get a four overall, but they can have what's called a domain exemption. We have some students with autism who are nonverbal, so clearly they're not going to pass the speaking part of the test because they, they don't speak. Or we have some students who have reading struggles, so we can opt them out of just the reading domain, but still on the other domains, I have to score an overall score of four. For our students who qualify for the alternate LPAC, which is a very small percentage, only 23 students in the district, it with the most significant cognitive delays, they're eligible for a different test that's given one-on-one. It's very dependent on pictures and images and the test examiner is able to prompt them a little bit and point to get responses from the student. And on that, the highest score is a three and they're required to get a three and they have to be meeting their IEP goals and they have to get input from their teacher and their case manager and parents have to agree. So those are our reclassification criteria. In terms of academic data, if you look at the gray box under the title, 81% of our English learner students remained at the same proficiency level or demonstrated growth last year on their annual LPAC exam. So 42% of our English learners increased by one or more levels. We've had kids grow one level, two levels, some even grow three level. 39% of our English learner students did not grow a level, but they grew by points and some, I updated it since maybe your, your copies were printed because I looked again today at the data. Some students can grow by over 150 points on the LPAC and it still doesn't bring them from one proficiency level to the next. So I think it's important not just to look at this vertical bar graph, which shows the proficiency levels or the, the amount of change from year to year, but also to really dig into the individual student scores to see, are the students who aren't progressing, are they at least increasing in points? Or did they go from Or did they go from one grade span to another? For example, the test gets significantly harder between second grade and three-five, or between third and fifth grade to sixth grade, or between six-eight and high school. So what we've been doing, the testing team, as I, as we're going out and doing speaking tests with students, is really challenging the students and letting them know, especially the ones in, um, second grade. And then again, in sixth grade, and then again, in eighth grade. The test is going to get a lot harder this year, so do your best, try really hard. And a lot of our teachers have been reaching out for tips on having data chats with students about, um, what was their proficiency level last year? How did they score in each of the four domains, reading, writing, listening and speaking? And then walking through to, students through setting a goal so that, um, they can reflect on that and so they have something to aim for. Not just, "I'm gonna try a little bit better on my LPEC test, but I'm gonna increase my writing score by this many points and I'm going to focus on my detail elaboration or my punctuation," or whatever it is that, that the teacher helps them decide on. Um, if you look at the colorful graph, um, this just shows that forty-two percent of our students increased by a level or more. Thirty-nine percent experienced no change. And nineteen percent went down one or more levels. But usually that was when, in about ninety percent of the cases, because I went through and looked at the data, it's when students made a change from one grade span to the next and the test got a lot harder. Um, not to say that we don't still expect growth, but it's kind of a little bit of the why. And then the, um, insert on the right is just the, the picture from our data dashboard about our English learner students. And it shows that forty-one point six, so forty-two percent are making progress. Speaking of the dashboard, um, this is a slide that, uh, our Director of Compliance and Accountability, Ms. Stephanie Groth, presented at our D-LAC meeting recently, um, to the district-wide parents of English learners. And, um, it shows how our English learners and our long-term English learners, which are a subgroup for the very first time this year on the California Data Dashboard, did last year. Um, I won't read you everything, but looking at the left, uh, English Language Arts and Math on, um, the CASP test, it's yellow because they, they remain the same. They, uh, maintain from the previous year. Anything green is good, even when there's a downward arrow, it's good because we want our suspensions to go down, we want our chronic absenteeism to go down. And then if the green arrow is going up, we want graduation rates to increase. And of course, red is, is an area for growth. So, um, that is how our, our English learners did on the data dashboard. And we're making good growth and I hope that this year we will continue to see a lot more green. Uh, everything we do for our English learner students, we relate to our, our LPEC. Um, and the goal for English learners is increased or improved services for our highest need students. Um, we consider our English learners here in Washington Unified to be very deserving of the best instruction and teachers who believe in them and their abilities and want to push them on to, to the next level. So we have a lot of instructional opportunities. We have newcomer support, as I mentioned. We have three newcomer classes now at Riverbank, two periods of newcomer support at, at River City High School. We've added some newcomer kits, which are just games and activities that have been purchased for all of our K eights, um, to be housed in the library for teachers to check out. And it's everything from little pop-it games with, um, where they can spell out words, bingo games, a lot of picture cards, vocabulary cards that teachers can do one-on-one with a student in a small group. Where I've gone into classrooms where I've seen the kids kind of self, self-guiding, um, their, a group through the activities. And then of course, we have our English Learner Summer Institute, which we're already gearing up for this year. In terms of teacher support, as I mentioned, we had an exciting professional learning day for the whole district last Friday. Um, I had the opportunity to present to our classified staff and so Robin, the teachers were in good hands with Robin, um, learning some strategies for meeting the needs of students in the content areas. Um, we do after-school offerings as well. And then we're working on putting together some modules for administrators too on the English Learner Roadmap and, um, the ELD, ELA framework. Also, there's instructional coaching support. So teachers can get help with lesson planning, demonstration lessons, data analysis and reflection. Um, and then when we do our progress monitoring assessments every November, uh, I always push out to principals a reflection form that they can share with teachers and, and kind of walk them through, "How are my students doing? How can I cluster them, um, to make differentiated instructional?" And then expanded possibilities for our multilingual learners. At the high school, we offer Russian and Spanish Language Arts classes. The Elcorn Dual Immersion, as you know, is expanding and this will be its first year. They were, the program spans K through eighth grade. This will be our first promoting class of eighth graders. Um, also, we offer our State Seela Bilingual Literacy. We have forty-nine students in, uh, seniors in high school at Middle College and River City who have passed the test so far. We haven't made it to YOLO yet, but we will. And then we have our YOLO County Recognition, which is for students who meet the language um, portion of the State Seela Bilingual Literacy requirements, but they, for whatever reason, they may not meet the ELA requirements. But we do want to acknowledge their multilingualism. So they don't get the state seal, but they do get a, a certificate and a recognition because going through school, speaking two languages is a huge asset. Um, and moving out into the workforce, it's, it's a huge goal and it, it will help our students and serve them well. And as you know, in Washington Unified, we have our Portrait of a Graduate. Um, and our goal for all of our students is that they will embody these characteristics. And so at this time, I want to highlight two of our River City students who are formerly English learners who exemplify these traits. Unfortunately, um, due to work and extracurricular activities, they could not be here. As of yesterday, they were going to be here, but, but schedules change. But it is a reality for a lot of our English learner students. We want them to participate and engage in extracurriculars, but also they have the reality of oftentimes having to work to support themselves and their families. Um, so they have entrusted me to share a little bit about their background, um, and their research. And they've asked for some time at an upcoming board meeting to come with their team from UC Davis to share with us all about what they've learned. So, and I introduce you again to Bahara, who was here last, uh, time. She made a public comment and her, um, classmate Johnny Liu. So at the last school board meeting, you met Bahara Yakubi, who made a public comment about the Youth Participatory Action Research Group at UC Davis. After meeting her, I realized that in twenty-twenty-one, I connected River City to that research group after going to a training and hearing about the opportunity. So I asked the ELD teachers at River City, "Hey, can we arrange a presentation for your students to learn about this?" So it was really a full circle moment, talking to Bahara and realizing that we were in River City's library together in twenty-twenty-one, hearing this presentation, never knowing that we would reconnect all these years later. Her parents immigrated to the United States and Afghanistan in twenty-twenty, leaving their five children behind. And they planned to go back for them shortly. And then the government of Afghanistan collapsed, um, so they weren't able to go back. So they had an aunt who was able to bring them. But of all of the siblings and the aunt, of which Bahar was not the oldest sibling, um, she was the one who had a passion for learning English and she knew the most English. So she was the one who navigated all of the travel plans from Afghanistan to America in the middle of a war, um, so much so that they called her Mother English. That's her nickname. Oh, that was so cute. So, and that was all at the age of fifteen. So skipping ahead a couple of years, she's now reclassified in just a few years. And she's a researcher employed by the College Going Initiative Project at UC Davis. Johnny Liu, an eleventh grader at River City, was born in the US, but he traveled back to China for an extended period of time when he was young and was able to return just prior to starting elementary school at Stonegate Elementary in twenty-thirteen. He worked hard, he enjoyed school, and he was reclassified just before middle school. He fondly remembers his ELD teacher, Ms. Subia, who helped him with grammar, spelling and learning about American culture. He's currently enrolled in AP Statistics, AP Language, Advanced Robotics, and he plays on the tennis team, so I guess there's a match tonight. Um, they would love to attend an upcoming board meeting to present their research project and findings, but they asked me to summarize their work. Um, along with high school students from throughout YOLO County, they're part of a group of fellows researching the question, "What are the most important barriers impacting college enrollment for English learners in YOLO County?" I can't think of anything more applicable. Um, this has been a multi-year project. They did student focus groups, they did surveys, and their goal was to identify the biggest barriers to our students attending college. And they identified that financial aid was the biggest barrier. Um, they have had power interviews with, um, Ms. Jackie Wong, myself and other leaders in the community. And what really struck me, it, they were entirely student-led. The UC Davis fellows were sitting in desks apart and it was just the high school students setting up the scene, just, uh, describing the research and then asking all of the questions. But what really struck me was that they're just looking for allies. They're looking for adults, influential people in their districts and in their community to, to partner up with them and come alongside them and help them spread the word of their work. So I'm excited to have them here and I've already partnered them up with the other English learner leads in the county by sending an email. And it just so happened that that morning, um, one of my colleagues, Heather Schlamman, who works at the County Office of Ed, said, "Well, I'm meeting with Garth Lewis this afternoon. Can you write me up a little something and I'd love to present it?" So just by word of mouth and because of the passion and the impact of these students, this, this, uh, research and their findings are, are getting to great places. Um, so they're currently wrapping up their research and they look forward to presenting here at a school board meeting. And they've asked to come to an upcoming D-LAC meeting as well, so I'm excited about. To wrap it up, spending time with Bahar and Johnny really inspired me. It gave me a renewed sense of hope in our English learner students and really a sense of pride that we're on the right track and we're doing incredible things here for our English learners and for all students. But to see that they both started their journeys in very different ways, um, coming from multilingual households and with the support of our district and our staff and their families, they have been able to do great things and now they're becoming advocates for their classmates and their community. I can't think of any, any bigger and better goal that I would want for our students. So to wrap it up, um, just some next steps, uh, to provide our English learner students with rigorous, engaging, standards-based instruction in all content areas, increase participation in the California State Seela Bilingual Literacy Program and the YOLO County Bilingual Recognition. We already have our dates set for April and May. Uh, continue to provide engaging, differentiated professional learning for teachers to better equip them to meet the needs of our English learner students. To expand supplemental supports for newcomer students and expose teachers to best practices to meet those students' unique needs. Uh, to update the District English Learner Support Plan, formerly known as the English Learner Master Plan, with support from educational partners. And it's not up there, but of course, to continue to, to partner with our students um, in this UC Davis research project and figure out how we can help them to get the message out about how accessible financial aid is and how many supporters they have, um, right here in, um, in our district leadership, uh, rooting for them and wanting the best for them. Any questions? Right, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, then I'll open it up to my board colleagues. Niko, uh, Trustee Wong.
I just want to thank you for being you. Uh, I, I know President, um, Quibi Gonzalez has said it before, like the sense of pride that you, you present like at, at these major conferences, well-respected across the state. Um, but for me, it's always been your heart. Cool. And I always get emotional when I see you. Because as much as people describe what's happening in our schools, it's moments like this that you meet the students like Bahar and Johnny and you go like, "This is why." Right, this is why we fight. This is, these are, we are having these conversations about student achievement. I love the fact that their project was about college-going career and that's where we need a little bit of improvement. So there's an interesting opportunity here when they present before us kind of their findings about like the, how we can increase college and career-going rate. Um, I'm sure you were shocked as I'm like, as I was shocked, like they, they were never told that college could get offered. And so a lot of, um, so that was something that was highlighted and so I'm looking forward to hearing from their voice, what that might look, um, here in the district. So thank you for everything that you do. I know it's not always easy, but, um, you are looking at a board of, uh, super majority of multilingual learner, learner, learners here. Um, multilingual, uh, multilingual folks. And so, um, for me, I'm just really just proud, proud of the work that, um, you've begun over the last, ever since I've been on this board and just grateful for your service.
Well, you stole a lot away, Jackie. I wrote down that it's really fun listening to you talk about this because you can tell how passionate you are about it. So thank you for that. I did have a question. Um, you mentioned a lot about professional development and support for teachers and, um, equipping, equipping them with what they need to support these students. Is, are the, the teachers receiving like a consistent support package to, so we're all consistently filling in the gaps of these students across all campuses? Or is it just more like a toolkit and each teacher assesses the need of their student and kind of implements it on their own? Um, and determining themselves, how should they fill those gaps? Or is that something we're providing to, uh, the teachers?
That's a great question. So despite the fact that we have seventeen percent English learners across the district, we have some classrooms, shockingly, that have zero English learners and we have others that have thirty. So, um, it's very different in terms of professional learning. It's for ELD specifically, I'll speak to my area. It is an area for growth for the district. A lot of the offerings that we do are after-school voluntary but paid. Um, and teachers are just tired or many can't attend, uh, optional professional learning sessions because they're doing intervention for their own students back at their home school. So, um, as a district team, we're thinking of more innovative ways to provide that professional learning during, ma- during contract time, whether it's, um, co-facilitating, I co-facilitated with, um, Shirley Ramirez from Westfield, uh, Professional Learning. She gave us some time at a staff meeting. So we presented some strategies. The teachers now have the homework to go implement those strategies. And then I'm going to go back next month and we're going to talk about how it went. Um, a lot of it is just communicating with principals about, you know, "Do you have any questions about your data? Is there any support you need?" And so it's kind of on an invite basis. But I agree, we need to be doing more to meet the needs of teachers, especially new teachers. During our teacher induction program, a lot of the times, um, Martina Guerra, Director of, of Induction, will invite either Robin or I to go and present to the teachers about what makes an English learner an English learner? What are the English learners in our district like? Um, and what do they need? So a lot of it is kind of on an as-asked-as-invited basis, but we're working to, to see how we can be a little bit more innovative in our time where teachers are, are there and, and required to be there. Because we can't expect everyone to stay till five o'clock on a Monday after a long day teaching, when many of our teachers have their own families to get home to or their own, you know, activities that, that they need.
Is the general temperature, do we think that teachers are feeling supported in this area or, you know, just kind of getting by?
Good question. Um, I think it probably varies based on who you ask. I think we do a, a good job, uh, putting it out there that we offer support. We have a, a coaching signup form if they want Robin to go and do lessons. Also, anytime we, um, push something out or anytime there is a professional learning opportunity, we encourage teachers to follow up with a coaching appointment so that we can start that coaching cycle with teachers where sometimes it's just, um, Robin or I going in and observing a lesson and then we'll meet with the teacher to see, you know, "How did your English learners do? What, what more do you want to improve upon?" Whether it's student engagement or, um, a writing, function or form that the students are working on. And then we work with them to craft a lesson plan and we can co-teach that or, uh, we, I can come and model it, they can do it and we can watch and then debrief. So our goal is ultimately to engage as many teachers as possible in true coaching cycles where they're getting, um, the training, but then also they're doing the lesson, implementing it and students are able to produce something. And then we come back and, and kind of analyze that data and plan for next steps. Thank you.
I have a quick question, um, just for my knowledge and probably anybody else that might be asking it. The English learners, are they in, integrated into like just the nor- like English-only classes? Like, I, I saw there was a demographic of, um, Afghan students, right? Like, I think at Riverbank, like, that's a big percentage. So I guess, I, that's the first question, but then also, are there teachers that look like them and then proficient in their language that could help with, you know, with the, the instruction?
Thank you. So, um, in terms of our general education, newcomer students who have been in the country two or more years, they are in the general education program. Of course, for our Spanish speakers, we offer them a spot in dual immersion because they already have the literacy skills. And studies show that if you already are fluent in your home language, it's easier to learn English. Um, for any student who's been in the country about a year and a half or less, we do call and offer them a spot in our newcomer center. Or if they're in first through eighth grade, a newcomer, a spot in the newcomer center at Riverbank. Some parents take us up on that and others do not. They want their kids to be fully immersed in English and that's their choice. But for our newcomer program students, while the teachers, um, are all monolingual, one is learning Spanish and doing a really good job. We do have an Af- a Farsi-speaking paraeducator in all three classes. So we have three ladies who support our teachers and they're not there to serve as just translators of everything, but moreover, more to support the, the literacy instruction. Who support our teachers and they're not there to serve as just translators of everything, but moreover, more to support the, the literacy instruction. Um, many of our kids from Afghanistan, particularly our little girls have never stepped foot in a school before because it just wasn't safe. So to walk into the classrooms, I was there doing testing today. And the kids are excited and they're noisy and they're, the girls are outspoken and they, you can just see the joy that they feel to be there. And in fact, in, um, gathering some, some data to, um, kind of reflect on, on the, um. The impact that the program is having, I asked the newcomer teachers just to text me a little blurb about what they think is their biggest success. And one highlighted her para educator. And she says, because they've had the chance to go through the IMSC literacy training and be empowered as a para educator. She's growing and her confidence is growing. And instead of just sitting, working one-on-one with students. Or assessing the new students, she's leading math groups, she's leading reading groups. And so there's more opportunities for differentiation and, and leveling and the teachers have seen a lot of growth this year. Preliminary data shows that, um, just between. The beginning of the year and February, a lot of students have grown a grade level and a half. In both reading and math and the year's not even over yet. So I'm really excited to see. How that continues. And I think it's in large part due to our para educators. Who look like the students and talk like the students. And in fact, they translated the conferences and they were able to say, I'm in class with your child all day. And this is what I've observed. So I feel like it's a very empowering opportunity for them. And also a little bit of language support needed as well.
Vice President Coffey.
Hi. Okay, so I've been going through it. I'm listening. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I understand your graphs. So on page, you're, you're. Number four, slide four. Um. I want to believe that the 17% of that 17% of the entire, you know, hundred and. 1,221. The blue 29, 29% is of that, right?
Yep.
So that's. 355 students.
Of the 1221.
Of the 12.
You're exactly right.
But that other one, 29% is 800, that's a whole different ballpark, right? That's the 2,814.
Exactly. And so those are students who are multilingual for whom another language is present in the home, but they may not be current English learners.
So they are, some of them have, um, been reclassified. Is that why the English learners reclassified or is it that all of them?
So it's all, it's the current English learners, the reclassified students, and then it's the initially fluent students who are never English learners. Okay. Because they pass the test the first time. So it's a, a different language fluency classification.
Oh, okay.
That's why that number is so big. So while we only have 1,221 English learners. More than double that number are multilingual students.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Cause that was where I was trying to understand. I'm all, there's, both of them are 29% and they have two different numbers. I need to understand this. So thank you. I appreciate that. So now I'm going on to. Um, you made a comment on slide eight.
Okay.
Where, um, I mean, I know, okay. So it's all about reclassification, this, this component. And, um, I heard you say it's, it, you know, they're, they're moving up, they're progressing within their language scope, right? And it requires us to, they're meeting and it are exceeding where they're at in their language. Teacher input, parent consult, they're like, yeah, let's move them. Uh, move them out of that. And we can't re, or how you said it, we can't unreclassify. Have there been moments where we? As a, maybe you've seen where there may have been a student who has been reclassified and shouldn't have been reclassified. And is that hap, does that happen more often? In which case we are, I don't want to say we're setting up, but we're, we're, we're doing the best we can to ensure that we're not setting up our children. To be reclassified before they're ready. Cause some of these parents, if this is our second language, they're like, yeah, I'm ready to. Move them on. They're not going to know, they may or may not know the difference. Are we really ensuring that we're not pushing them? To move forward? And I, and I only say this because if I remember the data, it shows that our kids are also very low in English. So if we're pushing them to be reclassified, so we get that one up, but we're having low in our English. Language arts score, that's also being affected as well. So I'm just trying to understand. That we're not pushing forward for one positive and then in the end getting a negative.
At the cost of the other.
At the cost of the end. Yeah.
For sure. Um, definitely. And so that's why there are four different criterias. It's not just one. We want to make sure the parent is comfortable. The teacher who's there with them for six hours a day and sees the, the completion of their work. And then we look at that other ELA, um, component as well. But you're right, um, sometimes, especially in our younger learners, our first graders. Um, in first grade, there's not a lot of complex reading involved in the test. Um, so some students who are reclassified early on. Struggle a little bit, but that's why I'm so glad that we monitor them. It used to be two years until just a couple of years ago. Now it's four years. So it gives us the opportunity to monitor them every single year and to provide that early intervention. And then I always tell teachers, because there's a designated ELD class going on at your grade level. If that student could benefit from the language support that's being provided there, by all means. They can go visit that class. Um, but ultimately. For the most part, if the student is on track with all four criteria, they are ready. Um, and our district provides a lot of, um, instructional. I don't want to say intervention, but instructional supports for students. Because there are also English only kids who don't speak another language, who are struggling readers. So it's just knowing, is it, is it that they're struggling in reading or is it the fact that they speak another language at home, the fact that's holding them back? From re, reaching grade level.
Okay. I would just want to make sure, like I had to get that, that, yes, go ahead.
I want to make sure too, I'm understanding your point, I think is. If our scores are low at times on, with our EL numbers, but when a student reclassifies, can you speak to that where they would appear on, on the data if they reclassify? Um, are they the ones that are showing up in that EL number?
So on, in, in, for purposes of the data dashboard, they're counted as an English learner. Um, for one year after they reclassify and then they're not in that group anymore. Um, so that it does kind of tend to, to help our data and it also helps us to monitor the students. And I think it just underscores the, the point that rather than looking at, you know, the speedometer colors on the data dashboard, it's important to really look at every student as an individual. And how are they progressing? And even if they're reclassified, like you said, what are their learning gaps? Because it's not like as teachers, we say, whoo, they're reclassified, I'm done, my work is done. It's, we know that students are always. Um, expected to rise to the grade level standards and expectations. And so what are we doing as teachers to, to provide them the support regardless of their needs? For, uh, whether they have English learner needs, but also just academic needs as well.
Thank you. Um, cause that was kind of where I was kind of going with is I know we're not, I'm not trying to look at it as a whole and. The speedometer and I understand that we are to, as teachers and educators, we are to look at our individual students. But when you have a large class, it's kind of hard to identify and make sure that one person or one child is getting the needs and what the resources. So. I'm glad to hear that you, we are providing these classes and the additional support. Um, I'm hoping that our educators that feel that they didn't know that this is a resource, that they are reaching out because. I will say as a new teacher. When I was a new teacher, it was very hard for me to look for where my resources were. Cause I don't know what I don't know. And I hear, oh, we can come into your classroom and we can give you pointers. Okay. If you're giving me pointers, is that going to be an assessment that it's going to go against me because I should have known or I didn't know? So making sure that those are areas of like support and that it's not being dinged or looked or frowned upon. Or asking for help because sometimes. When you're like expected to do something for the first time, you're expected to do it and. And do it at a high standard. And I say this because I remember being told my children were in the red or the yellow. And I'm expected by the end of the year to get them to green. And I just remembered at our last board meeting. The expectation, the true expectation is only one level. That you can see, but yet as a. As a, as a new teacher being told that that's where I needed to go. There was unrealistic expectations and knowing that I didn't have the skillsets that I needed. I don't know if I would have felt comfortable because then I would be like, okay, I should know how to do this. I'm just laying out some of the things that I know from my experience. It's been years. I'm very happy. Things have changed so much since then. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that I, I, I said, put that out there so teachers know that this is a resource. We are trying to, if we haven't. Giving them that support or not that we haven't, that if they haven't looked out for it, that they are, you guys are there.
For sure. And to your point, if I may, also every year at our new educator orientation, the couple of days before school starts. Um, my department of two, Robin and myself, we are always invited to go in and deliver a little bit of data about our English learners and who they are and what resources they have. And then the instructional coaches do a presentation and I'm picturing the slide, what coaching is and what it isn't. And the first thing is it's non-evaluative. They are teachers on a teacher contract in the same, um, union. And they are there to purely provide support. A lot of our coaches are also induction support providers and so teachers know that that is non-evaluative and it's purely, um, a support role. So I think that. Thank you for that question and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to underscore the fact that our instructional support is purely, and that's why I usually send Robin, our program specialist and not myself, because I am an administrator. Um, but I still have a teacher heart and. Read Across America week was my jam because I got to go to a couple of classrooms and read to kids, but, um. We really emphasize that it is a supportive coaching program and non-evaluative. Um, they will never go behind your back to talk to your principal about you. And in fact, if a principal comes and says, well, how do you think they're doing? From a coaching standpoint, that we're not going to engage in that conversation. I can give you some positive things that they've been doing. And some growth I've seen, but that's not the role that they play. And we try really hard to, to delineate between, um. Coach, it's instructional support and evaluator.
Thank you. That's my last question. Thank you.
All right. Um, just this morning I was setting up donuts and, uh, chocolate milk for a reclass party, uh, with my other hat on, um, as an educator. And, um, the, it is a hard, it's a very high bar. It's hard to reclassify, especially as you spoke, as you get older. Um, and it's a huge accomplishment. And so many of. Our kids, um, that you speak to in this are, uh, many of them are not only speaking one other language, some of them are speaking two, three even other languages. It's really incredible to, um, to witness and see all that they're doing and, and what a, um. What a responsibility it is for us, especially. Um, especially our African girls, as you spoke to, who, uh. Many of which have not had the opportunity to be educated. And so it just speaks to what an important job we have. Um, to help give them that education. And I, I know when I was, uh, with a student just a couple of weeks ago, brand new student to, um, our school and country. And, um, you know, I, room one. You know, and I got a big smile and I thought, oh gosh. So we pull out, you know, our translator and we're working on it. And of course you can't read in a native language, so we have to use, you know, Google translate, but the, but it is a very. Uh, real challenge in terms of supporting our kids. And I just think about how scary that must be. Um, if you move, you come to new, this new place and you're put into a classroom. And you're trying to, and you don't know what room one means, you know, where, what your classroom is. And so it is a really, um. I'm so grateful for the newcomer program that you've really helped lift, that our teachers and our bilingual, um. Assistants really make the magic happen there because our students have this opportunity to have a very special place where they first land. And so thank you for that. And, uh, it is, it's phenomenal always to see Stacy present at statewide. Um, I have the opportunity because she'll just pack a room and you really are a leader in this work and I want to thank you for all you do. Um, and it is really incredible to see not only, of course, the data. But also the stories and the pictures and, and really, um, just a beautiful job of really painting the whole picture here and where we can go. Um, I have two questions. And one is, um, the expanding possibilities. The Russian and Spanish language arts class at the high school. Would there ever be a need, um, or an ability, it might be challenging to staff, I don't know. But to add like Farsi or Pashto to that also? Um, and has that been considered?
It, we're looking into it. We have students who are high school students who would like to take the seal of by literacy test. They may be in a Spanish class or a French class, but they're fluent in one or more languages, like you said, because many speak three, four, five languages. English is our sixth. Um, so we allow them to take the seal of by literacy test and we're noticing their oral skills tend to be really high. Um, some have the writing, the reading and writing, some do not. So we're, we're monitoring data to see if that might be a need and a possibility. And we will find the person if, if that comes to, uh, fruition and we need a teacher, we can find that person.
And then, um, actually I have two pieces. One would be, I know the summer school program that you all run is so, it's just so well done. And I know that the curriculum has really been teacher designed and run, but is there a place at all within that for? For those, um, educators who are really just knee deep in the work and the PD of going through curriculum to also have a lens on. Some of those ELD curriculums that you're talking about, maybe, uh, maybe not necessarily a full pilot because they have their pieces, but could that be woven in to get their feedback? Um, on the curriculum possibly?
So I believe the adoption is coming up on a very, um. On one of the very next board meetings. And so I think that is our hope because, um. Unfortunately, one of the training weeks is, is what will be the first week of summer school. So teachers will have an opportunity later to get exposed to the curriculum. So I'm hoping if I can get my hands on certain components and get the teachers familiarized with it and get the students, um. To come on board with the routines. I think that could be really beneficial.
Okay. And then the last one, the EL master plan, how long is that as you update it? Do you update that annually, every three years?
It's an every three year revision. And with the new adoption and with the addition that I was, I was perusing the old one, the newcomer center is, isn't even in there because it's so new. Um, dual immersion had happened at Elkhorn. So that's, I always have to offer, um, list the program options for parents. What instructional programs they, they have available to them. Um, so we're going to be adding the newcomer program. We're going to be adding the updated reclassification criteria specifically for our dual identified students. Um, so there's always a couple of tweaks, but I feel like we've expanded our repertoire of strategies and supports to teachers. So I want to make sure that that. Um, comes through loud and clear as well. So we'll be having focus meetings, um, and, uh, opportunities for teachers to give their input administrators. Also classified staff, because so much of our classified staff. Works with our families from our community schools facilitators to our amazing bilingual liaisons. To the outreach team supporting them with getting to school on time. Our social workers, we've had to expand our multilingual, um, counseling services this year. So Victor Services is helping. But sometimes we just can't find the language that we need when we need it. So we have a social worker partner up with a bilingual liaison and we're able to support students or parents that way. So there's a lot, a lot to add. Um, but it just means that we're providing more services to our students and our families. So.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Uh, we appreciate you and, um, thank you for this update. All right. Yeah. And that now takes us to our consent agenda. As a reminder, three A was removed and it was moved down to, um, action item number three. So can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I move.
Okay, moved by trustee Wong.
Minus the three A.
Yeah. And seconded by vice president Coffey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you so much. And that now takes us to, um, our action items. We have number one, approval of the contract with mother load van and storage for relocation services. For the Elkhorn Village modernization project and that is with our chief business officer, Monique Stovall.
Thank you. This evening I'm joined, uh. With, by our facilities director, Dan Banowitz, and he'll present the slide.
Good evening. Um, back in Jan, on January 20th, the facilities department issued a request for proposals seeking qualified vendors. For the relocation of the Elkhorn Village, uh, campus to the Claritin campus for the upcoming, um, modernization project. Uh, we received three proposals that were submitted, um, on the due date of February 12th. After evaluating these proposals, the department de-selected mother load van and storage as the best value option. The services will include delivery of boxes and materials, um, in April, um, to Elkhorn. That will give them plenty of time to prepare, pack and get ready for this move. Um, it also has the actual services of moving from Elkhorn to Claritin. Then also a week before the next school year starts, uh, we'll have movers at Claritin onsite. To help assist with any last minute moves, changes, getting things out of classrooms, helping throw stuff away. Whatever the teachers, um, need to be prepared for the next school year, that, that is included in this contract. Um, the contract cost is $98,842. And it will be paid for through the measure Z, uh, Elkhorn Village modernization budget.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay. Are there any board comments? No, no. Okay. Okay. My only question is, is this similar to our contract that we had prior when we moved Westfield and did this work?
Yeah, it's very similar. It's just a different vendor. The vendor that we used for Westfield did submit, but they were much, they were a lot more expensive.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, with that, then, if there's no other questions, can I get a motion?
Move.
Okay, moved by Vice President Coffey, seconded by Clerk Castro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you. Okay, and that now takes us to approval of the service agreement between Washington Unified School District and the Roberts Family Development Center's Freedom Schools 2025 Summer School Program. I hope you're going to sing, Audrey Strick, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, or a little chant or something. Get us all going. I was just telling somebody about Freedom Schools today.
Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, staff and community. This evening, I'm joined by our Director of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, Ms. June, Mrs. June Flores, and she will present this item.
The Yolo County Office of Education Freedom Schools Initiative provides summer and after-school enrichment through a research-based and multicultural program model that supports K-12 scholars and their families through five essential components: high-quality academic and character-building enrichment, parent and family involvement, civic engagement and social action, intergenerational servant leadership development, and nutrition, physical, and mental health. The Freedom Schools Program fosters environments that support children and young adults to excel and believe in their ability to make a difference in themselves and their families, schools, communities, the country, and the world with hope, education, and action. By providing scholars with rich culturally-relevant pedagogy and high-quality books that deepen scholars' understanding of themselves and all they have in common with others in a multiracial, multicultural, democratic society, Freedom Schools Program further empowers scholars to believe in their ability and responsibility to make a difference while instilling in them a love of reading to help them avoid summer learning loss. Freedom Schools believes in an intergenerational leadership model. Therefore, the program is staffed primarily by college students and recent college graduates with a 10 to 1 child-to-adult ratio. Eighty WSD students will be served from June 10th to July 18th, 2025, at Riverbank Elementary. The program focuses on 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. And the financial impact to the district, the financial impact of the district's participation in the Yolo County Freedom Schools Initiative is $233,727.
And that comes from?
Learning, yeah, the Learning Recovery Block grant.
Okay, and I think we have two public comments. Okay?
Yes, we have two public comments. Our first public comment on this item is from Kamia Turner, Kamaya Turner. Sorry, you told me.
Welcome.
Hello, board, hello, everyone. My name is Kamaya Turner. I had the pleasure of coordinating our first West SAC Freedom School site this summer, last summer, and I'm looking forward to doing so again over Freedom School Summer. If, I know you all are familiar, but for the audience, Freedom Schools is a six-week summer literacy program, and we focus on not just the students, but their parents and the whole family in the community. And so we definitely grown a lot of bonds. We're forever bonded to our Washington Unified School District scholars. I had a few families here with me who they had to leave a little bit early, but they've been excited, waiting for the call about Freedom Schools. And I'm just ready for another impactful summer of reading, instilling the learn, the love of reading, but also the culture of Freedom Schools and waking up, coming, getting breakfast, but also doing our morning pep rally, which is Harambe, pulling together, just having the students hyped to read and having representation in people who look like them, who can mentor them and help them in this journey of life, really. And so I'm just excited to come back and have this opportunity to develop young leaders and expand the work that you all are doing, expand the work that Freedom School instills in our scholars. I would also love to invite you all to be our Read Aloud guest. We had the pleasure of having you come and read to our scholars, and they loved it. Like, they love morning reading, they love when somebody can sit down and really read to them, and also people that they seem to them are out of touch or like far away from them, but they're right here, and they're coming back and giving back. And so I want to invite you all to be Read Aloud guests and support our Freedom School Summer. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our last public speaker on this item is from Jacqueline Kendricks.
Good evening, everyone. Jacqueline Kendricks, Roberts Family Development Center. I just want to add, we always talk about so much about the literacy component and the reading and all of the things that the children achieve. The most important thing, I think, about that is that children have an opportunity to see themselves and their peers and to really work through some of the differences that oftentimes happens when you don't see yourself in the literature. And so it allows the students that you serve and that we get the opportunity to serve alongside you to see themselves in literature, to see their friends in the literature, and to come up with some really strong social and emotional tools and skills that help them into the regular school year, that they begin to learn to ask for help, that they begin to build their confidence in their problem-solving skills, that they begin to understand that they are not the only scholar that may be struggling with finding themselves culturally in a space where no one else may look like them, or struggling with single-parentness, or struggling with understanding why they don't have single parents. It allows children to create community and to better be able to advocate for themselves as they move forward in their educational opportunities. And so I just don't want that to get missed. That happens in the literature that Ms. Flores has talked about and happens throughout the day that Ms. Turner has. So thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve your students. We look forward to a great year.
Thank you. Okay, that would take us to some board comments or questions.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Or more of a question that could end up in a comment.
Okay.
And that's probably how it's going to go. So my question is, for these Read Alouds, do you bring your own book?
You can do both.
But they'll provide you a book, too.
Because if I am to come and do a Read Aloud, I'd like to bring my own book, and it's called The Book Without Pictures. I'm claiming it right now. No one else will do it. It's a good one. It has no pictures. It's literally the book. So I'm, I will dedicate a day to come in and read that book. There you go. And bring your dancing shoes. And my dancing shoes?
Yeah.
But it's the gym floor. There's not supposed to be heels.
Then you better wear some tennis shoes.
Good job, good job. Good job. All right, without my only quantitative comment, I leave it to the rest of my board.
Yes. Let's see, Hunt.
How are families typically made aware of this program available to them in the summer, as a summer option?
So last year, we partnered with our communications team of one to get the word out through flyers, emails. I believe our EDI department even made phone calls. So it was recruitment through flyers, flyers through school sites, so.
I did get a call last year.
Yes.
Oh, you got a call?
And spoke with one of you at one of the school events, so. But just, just curious.
Yes.
And then, so I'm seeing it's up to 80 kids.
Yes.
Is that cost, does it adjust at all if we only have 70 kids or 50 kids? Or is that a set cost regardless of the number of students who enroll?
So the number of kids will determine the number of staff, but we're pretty confident that we'll get 80 students, and that would be, the cost doesn't really, we're not anticipating that the cost would be less, because we're pretty sure we will get the 80 students.
Do we have the capacity to expand more than eight? I think last year it was like 60-something that.
Last year was around 60. We're committed to the 80 because of staffing and space.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, send me my little song.
Yeah, thank you.
And I won't pick the picture, the book without, add any pictures. We'll figure something else out. It's a really great program for those of you who haven't yet. I talked to staff who were there, and it just, it just meant, you know, it just transforms kids through the, through the journey. And so, yeah, it's pretty powerful, so I, you know, I fully support it, and I'm sure President Kirby Gonzalez will talk more about it. But yes, bring your dancing shoes.
Thank you.
Yeah. How many of our students participated in the last one?
So last year, all but one student was a WSD student. So the vast majority were our kids. It started out as a multi-district within our county program, but because of some logistical challenges, it turned out that we were able to serve just our kids in the program last year. And it's going to be the same this year. This is 80 WSD students.
Is there a number of, or breakdown in like grades or age groups?
So the program is geared toward our rising 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. So are you asking who was, which of those grade levels? I don't have those numbers at my fingertips, but we can definitely get that to you.
I'm just, I'm curious.
It was pretty mixed. Just my observational data, it was pretty mixed, but we can get exact numbers for you.
Thank you. Based off of that rising 4th, 5th, and 6th graders, that means there's currently 3rd graders and currently 5th graders going into the summer, correct?
Yes. That means that next year, they'll be 4th, 5th, and 6th graders.
Okay, thank you.
When the phone calls have been made home, are you able to target? I'm just wondering, when you call that, is it going off of the data when students mark black, or how are we being really strategic about that?
So yes, last year, we tried to focus on our student groups that are kind of our smallest underrepresented groups based on their enrollment data, what they, how they identify when they enroll in our district.
That's really good.
I mean, it also benefited, there were students who were not African-American and Black either, so.
Oh, yes.
And they benefited, too. It was diverse. It was pretty.
Everyone was, everyone participated, but we tried to focus some of our recruitment efforts around our kids who we know are not in the two largest student groups in our district.
Yeah, I do want to, absolutely, there are students, it was a diverse group, but I think we had just last meeting talked about some of our survey data, and we knew that our Black students were showing up in that data as not feeling as connected to school and some other concerning pieces. And so I think that while opening it to everyone as you have, but being really strategic, I think, is, is what needs to be done when we see, especially with our data that we were looking at closely like that, so.
Yes, we plan to use similar strategy as last year in terms of focusing on our underrepresented groups first, and then as we can't fill all of the spots, then we open it up to everyone.
Did you have another? All right. I did just, in a different capacity as well today, call a family and talk to them about Freedom Schools and making sure they sign up this summer. And it's just so nice to have this opportunity, and we're very fortunate, because it is a lot of money, which was pointed out earlier, but we are very fortunate to have these grant funds and additional funds where we can make opportunities like this happen for our kids. So, yeah, I'm excited.
Thank you. And one additional piece of this, last year, we opened up Freedom Schools as a learning opportunity for our teachers. So teachers who were teaching in our summer programs, we offered them the opportunity to come and visit the Freedom School classrooms to watch culturally responsive and respectful practices and action. And so we plan to do something similar this year.
One last question. June, you said it was going to be from June 10th to July 18th, but the form says June 9th. Is it June 9th, only because that's a Monday and June 10th being a Tuesday?
June 9th is the teacher setup day.
Got you.
June 10th is when the students actually arrive.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. All right, if there's no additional questions or comments, can I have a motion?
I move.
All right, thank you. Moved by Trustee Hunt.
I second.
Thank you. Seconded by Trustee Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving your evening, and thank the families that came, too. I know we went late, but. Okay. Now that takes us to the item that was moved, and that is the approval of the ratification of contracts under $35,000. Our Chief Business Officer, Monique Stovall.
Thank you. We request your approval of the ratification of contracts under $35,000. What does that mean? Back in August of 2018, the board at that time determined that contracts that are less than $35,000 can be ratified by the board after the contract began. The contracts listed on the ratification list, this board meeting include Black Hope Speech Therapy, California Healthy Kids Survey, Victor Community Support Services, Newzella Inc., Volar Strategic Advisors, for the total cost of all of the contracts combined at $49,939.06. Again, each of these contracts are less than $35,000.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Okay, then I'll open it up to my board colleagues.
Well, I was the one who wanted to pull this, so I'm going to go ahead and start it off. One of the reasons why, I mean, I understand that it's a zero-dollar amount to this contract. However, the language on there very specifically says that this is going to amend it to where it automatically renews annually. So what I'm asking is, does that mean that instead of coming here for board approval every year to see if we're going to be providing this service, does it automatically renew to where it just goes? That's my first question.
Which contract are you speaking to?
I'm so sorry, for Victor Valley. I should have said that, the 3A, A.
Yes.
I think that's, or no, 3, whichever one it was, Victor Valley.
It's Victor Community Support Services.
Yeah. I wrote it down, but then I wrote it somewhere else, and I don't know where I put it. I'm sorry, I have it up, and I can't even see it.
You have 112.
Because it's one, it's the only one that has an amend, it's an amendment.
37.
I have up to 112.
136, 137.
Yeah, we have to.
Understand the question. Okay, so sorry, let me start all over. The, this is for an MOU for Victor Community School Services. The purpose of this document is to renew the agreement for continuation of services from Victor Services regarding student health and wellness. And pretty much additional notes or instructions as we have used the services previously and currently. I do recall asking that if we were to have stuff or services, that we would, one, provide data as to why this service should continue. But in this actual, this is the Second Amendment, so I have the full, yeah, you could keep going down. I have the full package, so yeah, that's the one where it says, oh, now I can look at my big screen, not go like this. So in here, pretty much is saying, the parties would like to now amend the MOU, revise Section 3 to allow the term of the MOU to auto-renew annually. So my question is, if we auto-renew annually, is this something that would require us to come back to the board, or is it done without, you know, without having to bring it back? So that's my first question.
Okay. So the, this MOU, the term ends June 30th, 2026?
Yes.
And so we're not auto-renewing?
No, but this MOU is making it to where the change is that it will no longer, after 2026 of the services, it automatically renews every year on June to July moving forward. on June to July moving forward. Because if you look in section three, the term, this MOU shall become effective upon execution by both parties for a twelve-month period from July first to June thirtieth until the MOU is terminated in writing as provided for the section, so on and so forth. So that's section three term.
And if you continue in the document, the actual MOU, it, the term ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. The amendment, the amendment to the MOU.
But what I'm ask, what I'm asking is, does that mean, is that what this is saying, it's going to end twenty-twenty-six? Or are we automatically renewing every year after?
It will end, it will end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And this, this particular MOU is, um, for Victor Services to provide wellness coach support to Yolo, which is not an existing service. It's a new service through our participation in a grant, um, through, with, with, um, Victor Services. And it will end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. It will not automatically renew.
Okay, because I was confused. I'm like, wait a minute, I'm seeing things that says automatically renew and I'm like, don't we need to, like, I just wanted to make sure and, uh, you know, and because I was just talking about data and how it's like really important that we know what it is that we're doing. And then I see this that just popped up to say, let's just automatically renew every year without moving, you know, pretty much moving forward. I see that, that's how I read it. So for an additional twelve-month periods for July first, it doesn't have a year through June thirtieth until it's terminated in writing. So that's where I assumed it's just going to continue to go every year.
I agree, oddly worded.
So no, 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 it's, it's, it's how you're interpreting the.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, that's why I needed clarification.
I hear you, yeah.
So Superintendent.
Yes, and we will be sending the board more information about the funding that is allowing us to start this new wellness coach piece. This was a new, um, grant funded and we will send you information about it.
Okay, great. Because, uh, that was going to be some of my other questions, because I was going through the, 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 through the contract. I see that it's saying it's referring, going to refer, identify and refer individuals for counseling. But I feel like counseling is more needed than identifying who needs counseling, so. Yolo, we know, are, are children, are youth that there are a little bit more, um, up there in the need. So I want to make sure that the services that are being provided are not just a mask or a temporary Band-Aid to what is happening there, but that this is actually going to provide and help those students. Because I've already asked last time, I was like, this is something that we need. And then this comes up and it's like, okay, let's make sure that we're not just throwing things there in hopes that it's going to fix it. Is my, is my point.
I have a valid question. Oh, you want to go ahead and answer?
May I provide another bit of clarification? In our contracts, you'll see the closed one, the term, so the start and end date. Um, in our contracts and, um, it'll also say that it may renew up to five years. What we focus on is the beginning and the termination. And so should we recommend that we continue the contract beyond the termination date that you approved for that contract, we have to come back to you.
Okay.
And so that's why with the June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, should staff determine that this is a great service, it's serving our students and want to recommend that we continue, we will.
Thank you, Monique.
Me.
I know you have questions.
Clerk Castro. Do we have services like this service at, currently at Yolo High School?
We do not have wellness coaches at, um, currently at, at Yolo. We have, um, a school social worker who provides part-time support there, not a full-time, um, school social worker, but no, we do not provide wellness coach support current.
So what is the difference between a wellness coach and a part-time social worker? Besides the title?
You know, I can't really, um, go into a lot of detail about.
I was just trying to figure out, like, no, we don't have that at Yolo.
Well, I think for me, and I'm going to add to that, is do we, we have, uh, social workers onsite full-time for the other high schools? Do we?
For River City, we do, yes. For twenty-two hundred students, yes.
Is a, and, and I know I'm going, it's just, it's on my mind because we're talking about this, but to what she, to what, uh, Trustee Coffey said, she didn't want to put a Band-Aid on, um, a service that's needed. Um, are we going to be looking into that for Yolo High School?
A full-time?
Yeah.
Yes, we have, we have had, um, some conversations about that and we continue to look at how to meet the needs of the students at Yolo and that is one way that we are.
Adding this service.
This, but also looking at, um, the feasibility of adding a full-time school social worker.
As a school social worker, can I answer the question, the difference between a wellness coach?
Go for it.
Um, it's, it's licensing and it's training, right? So, um, a school social worker has a master's degree and certain training credential actually to, uh, provide a higher kind of acute level of, uh, treatment. Right? And then a wellness coach is just a lower level, likely not graduate level trained. Um, but more checking it, a step probably similar to your outreach workers. Um, but also more of a therapeutic lens versus kind of connecting to resources. So, if that, if that, uh, is helpful. So it is, it's part of a team. So definitely a wellness coach, an outreach worker and a school social worker needs to work together. I would say that the Yolo, um, the challenge with Yolo is they have two different social workers. It's probably be good to just have consistency. Um, even if it's, I, I know that you, we always look at the time, but the truth is you just need consistency, especially with students who have high needs and high, I'll just name it, high trauma. Um, and to make sure that that team is, that, that team is solid. So I don't know if that's helpful. That's just my experience and my training about those three different types of classes.
And the position of wellness coach is new to us, so, yeah, we'll be closely monitoring the impact of the service.
Yeah, I just, like, to your point, Yolo does need consistency, right? So hopefully this individual, I'm hoping it's one individual, if it's going to be one person that is consistently there to provide instead of like, oh, well, today it's Billy, tomorrow it's Juan, the next day it's Sophia, the next day it's Virginia. Just because I don't have a name ever. Um, but to have it consistent, because it's really important. Yolo has a special place in my heart. Those kids, they mean a lot to me. Um, so I want to make sure that they are getting what they deserve, not just whatever it is we have. So, thank you for answering my.
I mean, last, last year, and I know that you're going to bring back CYBHI, but I, I, I had the privilege of sitting on the definition for CYBHI and the wellness coaches.
The acronym?
Oh, so, that's sorry, the Children Youth Behavioral Health Initiative. And I know that I, um, in previous boards, I've kind of mentioned the multi-billion dollar investment in children's behavioral health that the states made, a hundred, hundreds of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. And this is, um, wellness coaches was something that the community and young people want to lift up as a, as a strategic investment statewide. So I'm really actually grateful that we actually receiving, um, some of those funds. Yeah, and this is from the, from the students directly.
While we have the contract list up, I had a question on, on another one on the list, if that's okay. Um, New Zella, we have on there supporting Westmore Oaks. The purpose was pretty vague, provide supplemental support of students. And so I was just wondering if we knew what that supplemental support meant.
So New Zella, so part of the common core shifts, one of the shifts was to make sure kids are not only engaging in the reading of fictional lit, or in literature, but also in nonfiction. So New Zella is an online platform. It's basically a bank of reading passages that a teacher can access. And let's say we're teaching a unit on peacocks and you want your kids to read some nonfiction on peacocks and some literature on peacocks. You could go to New Zella and put in your grade level. You can even change the lexile level, so even within the same grade level, if you have kids reading at a higher lexile level or someone who needs something a little less, um, complex, you can go to that platform and pull those reading resources based on whatever it is you're teaching in your classroom. So it's, it's a bank of reading resources for, for teachers. Um, in particular, reading passages that kids can engage in and you can adjust the complexity of the text.
Is this something that Westmore specifically asked for? Because it, it looks like it's for Westmore or is this something that is or could be implemented or accessible to other schools within the district?
Yes, it is definitely something that's open, that
Okay.
other schools could, um, purchase or invest as well.
Okay, it would be an additional to what this, okay.
This is a, a subscription specifically for Westmore.
And is it because they asked for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Piggybacking off of that one. And it's mainly because, okay, so we were told we're going to have this cover sheet. Clearly, a little bit more information on this cover sheet would be great, so that way it's like, okay, well, what does that mean? If unless, I mean, we can dive into the, the contract, we're, we're fine with that, but it, it clearly is like, wait, what do we mean by supplemental? What does this mean? So that way it helps us to know what it is we're looking at a quick glance. Um, so this is the first time that we're seeing them. Also, there's two different kinds, so let's, I see this beautiful electronic one and then I see another one that's handwritten. I, whatever you guys would decide you want to use, let's make it consistent. Virginia's all about consistency. And, um, and, and yeah, just leave a little bit more, a little bit more substance to our purpose or to description of the services just so we, we feel better about it as well.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, um, well, then with that, can I get a motion?
I move.
Okay, moved by Vice President Coffey.
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, that now takes us down to our board governance and we have our first read and adoption of the board policy and administrative regulation number three-three-five-zero, and that is our travel expenses. And, um, again, Monique Stovall, our Chief Business Officer.
Thank you. I'm here for the first read and adoption of a small change or a slight change to the travel conference policy. This policy was shared with the policy subcommittee. The major change is to the reimbursement rates. The reimbursement rates, uh, per diem rates is what it's often called, were the eighteen, two thousand eighteen rates. And we request that we update it to the twenty-twenty-five rates. We also request that, um, we make a slight change to the policy to provide the superintendent or designee with the authority to adjust the allowances for business travel. What we have found is, um, some cities like San Francisco or LA are more expensive than others and maybe more expensive than our per diem rate. And so we ask for, um, the approval to authorize the superintendent or designee with the ability to adjust those rates depending on the location of the particular meeting or conference. The basis of that adjustment would be with the government rates. They have very specific rates per city, per location to be able to adjust because some places are more expensive.
Okay, are there any public comments? Okay, are there any more comments?
I mean, I'll just say, we, we talked about a policy and the state's also raising their rates.
Yeah, and thank you for adding in the piece about, um, the note that talks about the superintendent being able to increase. Thanks for adding the piece that it would align with the GSA rate per city. GSA has per diem rates per city loaded, so, um, I think that's important to recognize. Um, I guess I did have one question and I can't remember if it's in this policy or not. Do we have anything in there on hotel rates, lodging rates?
We don't. The next part to the policy is working on the administrative regulations.
Okay.
Billy Duber, our Director of Fiscal Services, and I are reviewing that administrative regulations and identifying if we think that it would be appropriate to add some information of hotels.
Okay. GSA also identifies, okay, lodging rate per city. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. I have, oh, I have a question. I was looking at. Um, I have a question. You are use, you're using the acronym, the GSA for government, uh, rates. But when I read this, I don't read it the same way. Maybe it's because I'm tired, maybe because it's late, maybe because it's not my wheelhouse. Um, but the standard meal allowance for business-related travel prescribed for fed, federal income tax purposes to me is sounding different than the GSA. So I'm just trying to understand why you're using that in red, the change. The language just sounds different than what I'm hearing. So I'm wondering why you went with federal income tax.
Yes, I took that language from the California School Boards Association. They're interchangeable. GSA, I believe, is a particular department within the federal government. However, the federal income tax, um, rates are, are the rates.
So they're still set rates, federal income tax purpose. Okay, it just reads differently to me because I think of income tax and it just, so it's a government, so it stands for government.
I'll look to our federal.
General Services Administration. General Services Administration is GSA.
That to me seems like it makes more sense and it's more straightforward than the way this reads.
Except, well, I mean, I'll, I'll look to that square. Like, I, I think that that it's, this is more, um, more descriptive of what we're trying to do, um, than referring to a, an agency, but I, I don't, I don't, I mean, either way it doesn't. I don't, I don't think the effect is different. I'll look at, um.
Do people know what that means?
Trustee Hunt.
I mean, do you think?
No, I don't think people know what GSA is. I think federal income tax purposes is, is probably more descriptive.
You think this is more clear?
I don't know, I'll look at the, I don't.
I feel like a government standard, or if there's a way to like describe, then put a comma after that to just explain what that is. I don't know. That's all I have. Maybe it's just me, but I'm.
Yeah, I, I think for CSBA, this, this was the most descriptive and helpful, but I, I think that because it's, it's the federal income tax purposes, it's the limits put upon, kind of the, the travel rates that any business or any nonprofit can claim on certain, that's, I mean, it's, it's actually really just prescribed.
Could we just describe, could we just give the definition of what that is, is what I'm asking in the policy?
I, it, for, probably in the AR, maybe there's more description, I would suggest as to what that is, the reference to, I think I would recommend, this is just the, uh, board policy, so the details will be in the AR, so I think it would be helpful.
But we do describe when there's terms on our others, we'll say what they are. So I, there's a new term.
And just to be clear, the, when GSA sets their per diem rate, it's for federal agencies to follow. So I think I had had a question initially because I didn't know if we typically are following GSA rates, that makes sense. It aligned, you know, the eighty dollars per day aligned with what GSA has up, but, um, so the, the GSA rates are posted for federal agencies. So not necessarily something that school districts have to follow, that I'm aware of. Um, so I don't want us to get tied up into that language either.
Well, you, like, you look up federal income and it's your income, tax bracket and everything. That's why I'm not understanding. But, but okay. I mean, if you're looking at what is your federal income tax purpose, then you think of your tax bill, not a, not a standard that's set by somebody.
What I see that says shall not exceed, and I'm not just focusing on the federal income tax purposes. I'm looking at the shall not exceed the standard meal allowance for business-related travel prescribed for federal ta, income tax purposes. So if you look at it from the standard meal allowance, you take that whole thing and how the business travel prescription, prescribed, not a prescription, but how it's prescribed for that, then it's like a, a whole meal instead of the beans, the rice.
Okay, well, if this is CSBA language, I will let it go, uh, but it just feels, it just feels, um, it just feels odd to me. But, and then my only other question would be on, and this would go, um, to Trustee Wong's point later when you bring back, you know, when you do your, AR is in terms of process. If it is a lot of paperwork to put together everybody's receipts and do all of that. I know that some places are now saying when you go, just submit and check a box, like. just submit and check a box, like daily rate, and then you just get your daily rate. And they don't have to give all of the receipts. So I'm just throwing that out there to, as you look at your processes, because I imagine it takes a lot of people power. And do you think asking for receipts is is still the way to go? Or would that be?
That is how it's done on the federal side, is you're going to get the eighty dollars a day, regardless if you spend a hundred dollars a day or fifteen dollars a day. You decide how you want to spend your eighty dollars a day, and that's what you get reimbursed for. And that administrative step is gone of keeping all your receipts, submitting them. And what?
And that's our process as well. If you're at a conference and the conference begins at two o'clock in the afternoon and you're traveling again, you know, later in the day, then you get reimbursement for the dinner, et cetera.
When you give your receipts?
We do not.
Well, you're collecting board receipts.
He's like, I do what I'm told.
Okay, well, maybe as board members, then we need to think about our process. Because then maybe we're saving receipts for no reason. We've always sent receipts. And then if we're not.
They're nice to have.
And then if we're not reimbursed for our own meals, in full transparency to the public, I mean, we're not making a lot of money.
For audit purposes.
But we're not getting, but I don't think we're getting that. We're not getting that reimbursement for meals. So then we were saving it. So we should just look at our process for board members.
It's always good to have a receipt, right?
Yeah. But if we're not even turning it in or getting reimbursed, that's silly.
We should be getting reimbursed in the for meals that are not conference.
Okay, we'll, let's go over our process later because it's late. I, thank you for my side tangent on that. I appreciate it. But it was helpful for me to understand. So does anyone want to make a motion?
I move.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Moved by Vice President Wong, seconded by Trust, or sorry, by Vice President Coffey, seconded by Trustee Wong, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, apologies.
I don't do that a lot, but I. It's okay.
All right, so now that takes us to Board and Superintendent Comments. Dr. Hildress.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez, and good evening, members of the board, staff and our community. And so tonight, I want to begin by highlighting the importance of student voice and engagement in our district. And so I've had the pleasure, one of the best times of the year for me is when I get to meet with my student advisory groups. And so I've started those meetings this week. And our, it's been instrumental in fostering a collaborative environment where students share their perspectives and ideas. And the advisories provide a platform for students to discuss issues that matter to them and propose initiatives that can positively impact our schools. And so by engaging with students, I find that we not only amplify their voices, but we are also able to create a more inclusive and responsive environment. And so recently, when we started, I usually have my advisories three times a year. And so we had one in the fall. And we gave students a list of topics that we've heard are concerns. And we asked them at our three high schools, River City, Yolo and Washington Middle College, to pick the topics that they felt were on their heart. So they worked in maybe groups of three to four and highlighted some themes. And they came up with four areas that they felt were issues that they would like us to take some action on. And so the four areas are mental health, leadership, social justice and time management. And so for mental health, the students expressed concerns about motivation, isolation, stigma around mental health and inadequate access to resources. We always say, but we can't just come here and complain event. We need to be empowered to bring some solutions. And so they suggested increasing mental health resources, creating peer support groups and educating students and staff about mental health to reduce that stigma. Regarding leadership, students emphasized the importance of leaders demonstrating integrity, effective communication and empathy, which are part of our portrait of a graduate. Just, it was good to see they were making those connections. And so for solutions, they recommended providing training on communication skills, encouraging positive reinforcement and creating more leadership opportunities for students. The third one, time management. Students shared that they struggle with procrastination, overload and lack of of planning skills on how to plan things. And so their solutions are if the district or schools could have workshops on overcoming procrastination, introducing the use of goal-setting tools and encouraging structured study schedules and thinking about forming study groups. Because, for example, you, we find that when students go to college and they have not engaged in study groups, there are those who automatically get into groups. But if you've never thought about that, that's hard for you to know that that is a time management skill. And then the last topic they selected was on social justice. Students called for equity and fairness in resource distribution, better representation of diverse groups in leadership and more education on social justice issues. They suggested conducting equity audits and introducing social justice topics into the curriculum. They asked for doing something about bias in their adults on campus and with peers. And so they, one of the solutions they also asked for was training for staff and training for students on overcoming bias and what causes that. So moving forward, we're committed, I told them, to addressing these concerns through targeted initiatives. Follow-up meetings are scheduled at each high school to further discuss these findings and gather additional feedback. And we just want our students to know that the ongoing dialogue will help us develop strategies that better support their their needs. And so I think it's really important, if we think about the the survey information that we received last meeting, where the students talked about student voice and opportunities to engage being an area of growth for the district. And one of the statements was that students felt that we, as the adults in the district, were talking to them through surveys, trying to get their input, but they weren't seeing that we were doing anything with that input. Or I should say, they wanted to see better that we are doing something with that input. So we are starting to address that input, specifically at River City in the upcoming weeks with some focus on social justice support and training for students and staff. So look forward to sharing with trustees the outcome of that, which will be on March 24th and 25th. And then I'll have an update at the next board meeting. So moving forward, also want to thank all of our staff. For last Friday, we had a successful district-wide professional learning day. There were 599 classified and certificated staff. We had 70% of classified and 71% of certificated employees attending. And that allowed us to have a collaborative and engaging environment for professional growth. Of those in attendance, 284 participants provided feedback, highlighting the event's impacts. For example, one staff member, certificated staff member said, "Thank you and thank you for the gift of time to attend to other responsibilities. I feel taken care of in so many ways. That Maslow-style feeling of safety allows me to focus on my work, and I do appreciate you guys." Another comment from a classified staff. "I think you guys did a great job with this event. I didn't know what to expect coming in, but I walked away from this event feeling like my time was valued. I was given valuable information and everybody there was engaged, which helped me engage and learn." And then lastly, from an additional classified staff member, "Every support is welcome because we need it to serve our students. Thanks for all your efforts in putting these days together. So worth it, and breakfast helped so much." And so thank you for our team who implemented this tailored approach to make sure that all of our staff members receive training relevant to their role, focusing on practical skills that could be applied immediately to enhance student success. The sessions were led by our internal experts and specialized consultants across multiple, multiple school sites, allowing for the immediate application of new skills. For the day, it was a variety of sessions, such as developing common formative assessments for K-8 math teachers, enhancing classroom management for PE and VAPA teachers and focusing on social emotional learning for our high school teachers. Classified staff benefited from training on building inclusive learning environments. And all staff members were given time to complete their required Keenan training on their contract time as well. So just thank you to everyone who participated for all the collaboration with our labor partners and designees to create these sessions that we understand. We ask a lot of our parents when we ask them to keep their children at home. And so when we do, we want to make sure our parents know that our staff values and appreciates that sacrifice because we know that is a sacrifice and it is well worth it. And then lastly, I've been able to support our schools. And having data chats, we talk about how much we need to look at our data and think about what is going well and what are areas for improvement, or what are barriers, or what extra supports do our schools need? So this week, I've been having data chats with our principals. It's been the first time we've been able to engage in this level of dialogue where principals come and they meet with me and Assistant Superintendent Autry Streak. And we review all of their data, their CAS data, their iReady data, the suspension data, their attendance data, common formative assessments and and seeing how that window of collaboration is working. And it's been really good for me, I know, and for our leaders to shine and talk about the great things that are happening at their school. And then giving them the opportunity to share what are some challenges for getting to the needs of every single student every day. And so we talk about what we need to do better, what supports we can provide at the district level, what systems they're putting in place at the school level to make sure that we are not just gathering data, but we're actually analyzing it and then having an action related to that data. So it's been really good for me to be able to highlight and appreciate all of the work that goes on. And I want all of our staff to know that our principals are so grateful for all of the work of every single employee on their campus. And they're so grateful for all the employees who are not on their campus, who they know are supporting them in many, many ways. So it's been a great way to really think about progress and how we move forward together. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, the rest of the trustee.
Trustee Hunt.
Thank you. I, my senior project and my undergrad program, I developed a training session for time management. So I'll have to like pull it out and see. It's, it's probably no longer accurate. You know, it took me back. So. I, continuing with the theme of the night, we'll continue with Read Across America Day. I had the honor to go to two different schools and read, including both of my children's classrooms. And my daughter is in fifth grade, and she's getting to the age where I am more embarrassing to her than anything. But I am okay with that. I read the book Hair Love in her classroom. And my daughter is Mexican and black. And if you haven't read Hair Love, I recommend you all read it. But it's about a little black girl and her dad who are struggling to do her hair in the morning and get ready for a special visit. So I'm, I'm sharing this with her class and talking about how much we love this book in our house and how we can identify with the story. And I'm scanning the room and my eyes lock with my daughter's eyes. And she's just giving me this face of, Mom, stop telling this story. You know, but I will, you know, continue to tell this story and stories like this because it highlights the unique challenges different cultures face that aren't always visible or understood by others. And it really provides insight into different cultures' experiences that we might not realize is a challenge or just a different learning opportunity. It could help create the sense of empathy and understanding among our peers, our friends or other students. Just, you know, to to see it from another culture's perspective. And as I was reflecting on this day and kind of what, just the facial exchange my daughter and I had, it got me thinking about the anti-racism lesson plans that are, have been developed for the high school. And it's just, the whole experience for me personally couldn't have come at a better time, right? But it's really important to develop that understanding across not just the high school, but district-wide. And I know we all agree on this, on what challenges other cultures are facing, cultures are facing. So I want to thank the high school staff, the district staff for creating these lesson plans, updating the lesson plans. And I also want to thank their leadership for recognizing that this is a need and allowing the space to address this need. And I look forward to hearing how the implementation of these lessons go. Regarding the SRO program, if we could get an update on where we are with the city and just their cooperate cooperation and if that is potentially a issue and elongating this process, maybe determine what other options may be for the district to continue to push this forward without additional support. Thank you for sending the list of the one-time funded positions. I'm assuming, it was great to see the list. I'm assuming we'll have a conversation on those as a group soon. Okay, that'd be great. I also, I wanted to acknowledge and thank community members for highlighting different needs for some of our programs at our schools, athletics, our music program. And I think we all agree on this, but it it would be good to take a pulse check on assuring that there is fair and it's fairly accessible across all schools in the district, whether, regardless of what the program is, music, athletic, and even between athletic programs, assure that each of our programs are receiving the resources they need equally. I wanted to thank the Executive Cabinet and our executive leadership team for leading the way this district, the way that you do, and for the support, the way you you support our students. Okay, and then I want to end with, I know there's a lot of uncertainty around the U.S. Department of Education right now and what their funding is going to look like. You know, they're releasing staff. And I just want, you know, I, we all know this here, but I just want to share that we won't know what that funding looks like until there's a federal spending bill passed. And as of tonight, there's, there isn't a federal spending bill passed. Sure, we can be proactive and look at options, but there's so many unknowns in this process. And Washington Unified will be impacted in some way, but it's hard to tell at this point what that even looks like, right? So I just want to share that. And, you know, I know we're seeing in the news, they're losing 50% of their staff. And as a federal employee myself, who still has a job as as of 9:00 PM on March 13th, 2025, those of us left that are still employed with half of our teams are doing everything we we can to continue to accomplish the mission of our. to continue to accomplish the mission of our organization. So just know, know that I don't work for the Department of Education, but I know the federal employees, boots on the, on the ground at the Department of Ed are rooting for us and they're doing everything they can to support us. So understand that, you know, this is real life for a lot of people. And we will get through this funding year as we get through every funding year. So we'll, you know, there's a lot of noise and um, just feedback, right, of what we should be doing in this time. But we don't know what it's going to look like quite yet. So we just keep learning and keep taking in the facts, which is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wong.
Thank you for that, Trustee Hunt. I, I know you are in the thick of it and really appreciate that perspective. Because those who are, are still there that I've spoken to are, are fighting the good fight, right? When you think about the Office of Civil Rights, regardless of uh, those off this closing, we as Washington Unified will still, again, take us, we have taken a strong stance against hate speech and discrimination, and we always will. And so we, to the extent possible, we will discipline accordingly, regardless of whether or not there is funding at, at different levels. We will always support the needs of students with disabilities because we always have. We always have done that with our general fund dollars. Because let's be honest, and the feds have never fully funded us for supporting our students with special needs. So those of you who are uncertain, we will, that said, we will have to take a deeper dive into our books and figure out what this looks like. That's real. That's real because we, majority of, of our funds are general fund dollars. And we stand by you because we believe in equity excellence and empower every single day. And we believe in educational, so I appreciate that. I also want to acknowledge that we were together on March first, kicking off Women's History Month. And so, so proud of our board and our cabinet, all females. And really just grateful for all of you all because I, I think I, I said this when you all first came on board is we serve differently. It feels different. It feels good. It feels centered. It feels. And again, no, no judgmental previous, but it, it with every new board, it's different. And I'm just so proud to be part of this board with the different stories and the purposes and the reasons we are serving. And I am just grateful that all, all the mamas here, all the mamas here understand this in a, in a different way. So kudos to, to you all and us for doing, for serving in the midst of this uncertainty because mamas are hecka resilient and we know how to put together a budget. As you, you know, we need to kind of meet the needs of our children when, when there are challenges. So really grateful for you all. And then grateful for the Yolo, like for, for us planting trees. My shoulder still hurts by the way from that. The cool school.
You like blew it away.
I'm like, oh.
I was impressed with what we were doing until you came along.
I'm like, the adrenaline was like, okay, we're just gonna go. But now I, like a week later, I still, I'm still, a couple of weeks later, I'm still in pain. And so Rita Cross Mark is always really wonderful. Thank you for those who have invited all of us. I know we all have stories. Thank you all for representing your families and, and uplifting that. I also had the opportunity to go to Empower Her and at U C Davis with all our middle school students. So proud to see their energy and kind of their collaborative nature. And I'm just, just really, again, grateful and I'm going to remain hopeful about what, what lies ahead for us. So with that, I'm going to say, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Castro. I'm going to piggyback on some of the things that the other trustees said, but I was able to, I'll start with Alcorn. I was able to go to the coffee with the principal. So I want to thank Daniel and Monique for doing, actually presenting the updates on the modern, modern, modernization of Alcorn. And then also acknowledging the requests that were made from, I think it was a February meeting, the public comments and then answering questions for the parents that were there. Because and they, I think they left with like feeling hopeful about the modernization plans. So thank you for that. And then also I just want to acknowledge Mesa, Mesa, they competed at Sac State. It was on two, when we did the cool schools. And they work really hard with their engineering of their moon bases, their gliders. Like they spend time after school, you know, their own time dedicating or dedicating their own time and, and the teachers too with doing the, the engineering of those projects. So and I'm going to be honest, I don't know whose place, but congratulations to them. I'll piggyback on trustee Hunt's comments on making sure that it's equitable across the board. For the, I guess, the elementary schools with it, like I'm going to specifically talk about band because I went to, and I mentioned this at a, a different board meeting. I went to the middle school band performance yesterday at Riverbank. That gym was packed with parents, supporters, kids. Stonegate and Bridgeway, Stonegate, Bridgeway, Alcorn and, and Riverbank all performed. And I'm, I'm super disappointed and, and my heart hurts for these kids that don't have everyday band. And if I played you a video of the different performances of the kids who have everyday band versus the kids who don't have everyday band, you would be shocked. There wasn't clap, as much clapping for the first group. And when I, and I, and I, I observed on purpose because I, I'm a band parent and I seen some of the kids smirking. It's real. I'm not blaming them, but it's real. But I put myself in the students that don't have band every day, their, their shoes. And the look on their faces just looked like defeat. So I hope we do look at, I'm going to be advocating for, like, how, like, how did we get there? Maybe there's something that I'm not knowing or seeing, but I would like to know. So I can share that information to the parents that take time out of their day or the students more than anybody to participate in something that is offered to them. And they don't feel like up here where we strive for excellence and equity in our strategic plan and they don't have it. So um, and then the S R O survey, not just an update with the city, but maybe West Sac P D too, because they are a partner in, in the funding. You know, I know they're probably doing a lot of recruit, I don't know, recruitment and, and all that stuff for the the ta, the measure that just passed, measure O that just passed. So you know, where are they on, on, well, do we have to approach them first? I, I don't, you know, I don't know, but if we can get an update on the boat, on both of them. And then, yes, thank you for sending the one-time funded lists. And I also would like to go over that because I'm like, oh my gosh, this is so much information. And it seems like everybody knows, but I kind of don't. And I, I'm feeling like, oh my God, I don't even know what question to ask. But I think one of the biggest concerns that the general public has, and even for myself, is did we switch funds or did we switch positions and add positions that should have been terminated? I know that's a hard, I know that's a hard conversation to have, but we have to have it. We have to be transparent and we're going to face the, like Jackie said, it's coming down the pipeline. I'd rather address it now and make those hard decisions, decisions than later and being a deficit and be taken over by the state. So but I do appreciate, also, I appreciate the, um, I feel a certain camaraderie with, between all of us also. So I appreciate that because it could be way different from what I've heard. So thank you. And that's it. No, we don't need to do that.
Happy birthday to you.
Vanessa's birthday.
Happy birthday, dear Vanessa. Happy birthday to you.
It's not really until tomorrow, but yeah.
And as we've said, your birthday is tomorrow and our gift is that we are not going to hopefully see you to celebrate your birthday actually is beginning is we're going, we have to go back into closed session, but that is our.
That is the goal.
So I will go ahead and say a lot of the trustees have kind of already said some of the things that I wanted to say. So I am not going to elaborate anymore than second S R O, what Hunt and Castro said, my trustees, fellow trustees. And second, on the, what are we doing with those, those, those funds, one-time funds? Ready to have that discussion? Let's see. Okay, okay. Real quick, real quick. I got all my notes everywhere. Yes. And second to the like planting of the trees, that was amazing. I went with avid, Riverbanks avid class recently, the sixth to eighth graders. We went to Sac State, did a field trip. That was really awesome. In addition, last weekend, I went to the Yolo County of Education and did the parent university that was at the Yolo County Office of Ed. That was actually really, really good. Let me explain, I have an 11th grader, or they may, he may possibly go into college. I don't know, but this opened my eyes as the last time I looked at college stuff was when I was in college. And so I'm like, oh, what has changed? Good to know that some of the areas haven't changed, such as like a FAFSA and you know, but we talked about financial aid. We talked about the differences of a loan, subsidizers, unsubsidized. And I was like, oh, I remember that. And then what about scholarships? I'm like, where can I find those? And they gave me like links and whatnot. We also talked about dual enrollment, schools that are not, that are not like Washington Middle College, High School. How you as even at the high school level can be, can be duly, you know, dual enrollment. It has to be approved by both the school as well as the parent. So even our River City High School students can do that as long as, you know, the parents and the counselors are approving that. And they make sure that those fun, those, those classes are not something that they can take at River City. So this is an option. I'm not sure if my parents know that, but it's something that you can do. This was offered, this parent university was the first one. They're planning on doing more of them because it did have a really good turnout. I wasn't aware that you can bring your kids or your student, you know, your, your little ones. They had daycare provided and food. They gave you breakfast and lunch. I was like, where was all of this information? I just saw the flyers like, yeah, I'll go. That looks like a really good information. There was parents who were like, well, my kid's an eighth grader. And then there were some parents who they're like, next year, I don't really know what's going on. So we had even from Elk Grove and outside of Yolo County. So it wasn't just Yolo, but it was, there was, it was good. So. They do a good follow-up too. Yeah, just added like they, they will call you and say, you're sign up for this. Are you prepared? Do you have any questions? And then I wasn't able to make it, but, and I know, knew you went and I got an email after the thing. And they were like, hey, like they are just really good at. Yeah. And they even gave you a certificate of completion, like a graduation or like, here you go. And then I was like, wait, we need music. So I busted out my phone and put on the graduation music for everybody. So it was fun. It was a lot of fun, a lot of, a lot of information. So I took pictures of the slides, but they weren't really like the best looking. So I'm hoping and waiting for the actual slides to come in so I can share it out. But until then, I, 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 I will definitely be posting that or sharing it somewhere. I did want to say that they do, based off of time management, they will be having Woodland Public Library and the Yolo County Office of Education, it will be, are proudly presenting Adulting 101, Life Skills for Teens and How to Adult and Be Successful in Life. And that is going to happen on March fifteenth, so coming up soon. And from nine to three, and it will be at the Woodland Community and Senior Center. So I will share this with you, Dr. H, so that way you can, if you want, I don't know how we do it, your goes. I'll leave that to you on how to go all about sharing that out. I want to also say that, um, speaking of funding, we were talking about that earlier. I'm on board with, and I'm so glad the W S D A and C S E A are, they're okay with, you know, the out of state conferences pausing for a while, you know, while we go through this, what's happening. I'm good with that. I liked how they mentioned, like, there are books out there. Perhaps we can do like book clubs and seminars and like, when I say seminars, it was something that I remember in college of like, okay, it's, it's like you get a book and you talk about it and you read it and how did, what did you take from it? And you gain, gain a lot from that and that could be something or a different way. So instead of having one day, it's just like, hey, this is the assignment. Let's talk about it and let's get together an hour after school on a certain day. And let's talk about what did we get from it? How can we implement this and so on and so forth? So that is a good, something that they said, it kind of trickled in my head as maybe that's a possibility that we can do. And, um, and make it to where, I mean, there, that is something that the state offers with like, why am I thinking, I have the acronym, Continuous Management Leadership Training. So perhaps that is something with professional development that it's like a continuous thing that they could do because it is a book and they are learning. And if they put in the hours to read and talk about it with their fellow, fellow teachers, perhaps it might be something that they could, it can help towards that, that training piece as well. And I'm going to end on the, oh, soccer season is here. And so we started this, we started this week with all of our middle schoolers playing. If you are interested in going out and watching any of our seventh, seventh, uh, seven schools, their games start as early as four out there at River City. And the last game starts at six, so they're literally only an hour. So four and five and then six out there by River City. The back of the tennis courts, behind the football stadium. That is where they play. They have the, the bleachers ready to go. And it's, and there's always one team or one school that's on a bye week. So just so you know, and it's usually on a Monday or Tuesday occasionally. I already know I'm going to miss one because I'm going to be here on a Thursday. So FYI, the schedule's out there somewhere, y'all. Check it out and go, you know, support your ducks, your dragons, your, your, your otters, your tigers, tigers and your Wildcats. And I go, and I think we, I, the, I mean, they were, they're in the family. They're in the family. Don't forget our bees and then I think there's one more. I know I'm missing one. I feel like I'm missing one. I know, I was like, we're, oh yeah, see? And our lions. So I was going to say lions, tigers, we don't have bears. Oh my, so. It's a bee.
It's the best one.
Because it makes, it makes honey. It makes honey. All right. And that is all that I have. So come out and support one of your teams or just cheer on all of them because that's, it's great.
All right. Thank you so much. And thank you for all the comments. I wanted to speak to one of the pieces we heard this evening of the idea of posting the discipline matrix. And I like that idea. I know though it is in the process of being updated. But I think that that is a, I think that that would be a, a good move as we work to update that so that students are clear, staff are clear, and it's, it's easy communication of just here's how we do our business. And then the other piece to that also was the exit interviews that we talked about. And I know that we have exit interviews with staff, but maybe if we could here is an update like the process on that and then making sure that we are capturing and offering it to all of our employees who leave, not just when we have maybe leadership, but as you know, our para educators and others. And so if we could have an update on that, or if there's some next step that, that staff needs to make there, that would be important to hear. The other piece was pre-COVID, we had supported students with paying for the pre-S A T because it was a barrier for students. So the district actually paid for it and had students taking it here. And then the SAT kind of went away with colleges and there's been some changes with COVID and now it seems like it's coming back. So if we could just look at our, our process, because it was brought to my attention that students are asked when they take it off-site to use a personal device and not their Chromebook. And some of the students reported that other students from other school districts were using their school issued Chromebook. And it was a simple change that, that needs to be made on the tech end. I obviously don't, this is not my expertise. needs to be made on the tech end. I obviously don't, this is not my expertise. But if we could look into that, because I can understand that being a really big barrier when we think about our students that want to present on barriers to college. If this is now, you know, coming back as a requirement for, for some of our colleges, our students need support with that. And, and that is an, an access issue is trying to find, you know, a computer that you can take tests on. So if we can look into if our Chromebook can accommodate that and what that might look like. And then there were a lot of important points that Dr. Hildreth and all of my board colleagues made, and, and I appreciate all of them. Thank you for your insightful comments. I want to share that we did have a public comment that was sent to us and it is that, I guess, permission of hate when you hear federal policies of threats of pulling funding if there are DEI programs and reporting sites for school districts that are supporting equity initiatives. And, you know, I am proud of this district and board because where were we, you know, recently at our last special board meeting? We were on a, at a board meeting focused on leading with an equity lens for our students. And I know that that is how our district feels as well. And this is a community where we will not bend to that hate. I want to thank our communications team of one, Yorgos and Dr. Hildreth and all of our board for right before this meeting, putting out a video that condemns hate speech that has no place in our schools. And we stand by and we will support our students. We need our community to do that as well. And I'm grateful to serve and live in a community where the comments like what we had are not the norm, that they are rare, but we need to really stand up and speak out against them, not just here as our board, but we need our community to help raise those voices as well. And I'll share that our students, who are incredible in so many ways, started a, our TSA started a drag show in protest three years ago to the restrictions that we're putting on drag shows across the country on transgender youth. And they started this drag show as a protest. And trustee Wong was there as well. I took my daughter and we went and we rocked out on Friday night in a very safe place, but with our kids and ended the evening with all of the guests coming down with our students and dancing to Pink Pony Club. And there's really no more joy than you can have than that. And so we of course have the hard pieces that we are working on. There's a lot of hard stuff coming as was spoken to, but we have a lot of, of joy as well that we can harness and work on and just lift our kids' voices. And I want to thank our, our district leadership and staff because we have the right people here to do the work that needs to be done. And you have the full faith of this in doing that. And with that, we have closed session. But before, I'll take our future board agenda items. And I did hear an update on the SRO piece, and that could be an update or a future agenda item, I think, depending on what that looks like. I also heard a piece on VAPA, specifically banned programs in the district. College-going initiative for English learners to bring back our students.
Trustee Hans, also is not, not just VAPA, also athletic?
Yeah. And that was, I don't, I don't know that it needs to come here, but that was just more of as a district assuring that all of our athletic programs are receiving the resources they need for that specific program equally.
I think maybe if there could be in a superintendent update as well, and then we'll see where it goes. I'm thinking specifically because the board recently received communication about wrestling and I'm thinking maybe we're thinking of girls wrestling versus boys wrestling. What are our, how do we make sure that our students are, are.
Receiving the same level of staffing based on what that athletic department needs, right? It's going to be different from sport to sport, but making sure we're giving each program what, what they require to be successful.
Especially when it's, there's league requirements, right?
Is that clear? Okay. And then were there any others that I missed in this piece?
The college-going initiative for English learners. I think you said that, but I just wanted to make sure because that was a presentation that our student came last, not last week, last board meeting. And then Ms. Tran kind of like reemphasized because they couldn't be here today. So if we can have that put on the agenda as a presentation sometime, we can see when they are, they are available. As I want to make sure that they, we don't schedule it or update it there at a match.
That's true. And a date when the, I know some of our agendas get very heavy too. So thinking about that for both. Okay. And is that all from everyone? Okay. Then we're going to go back into closed session. I'll read out what for government code section 549, 57.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Sub-USTA, CSEA, and Management, and government code section 549, 57, Public Employee Superintendent Goals Midyear Update. We'll report out at the end of that, but have a good evening and a safe weekend and a happy opening softball weekend also, speaking of sport.